I call the meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to order. And this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel Eight and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel Ninety-Nine. It's being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel Seventy-One and Comcast Channel Twenty-Five. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Lynn Dutton, Alex Seidey, Scott Gray, and Victor Herman. We have four technicians tonight.
Oh. Thank you. One.
Oh, Scott Gray. Those are the four possible. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting, and when you come up to speak, please sign on the sign-in sheet so we can have a record. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Story?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Chairperson Newman?
Here. And next we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the parliament for which it stands, for innovation underground, individual with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to Oral Communications. First, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes. Or, excuse me, we actually, we did get a request for a continuance for Item Five-A. Pardon me again, it's not a continuance, but that it be withdrawn. So that item is taken off the agenda.
Okay. Anyone here for Item Five-A that is not going to be heard tonight? That is Two Thirty-One Espinade, a sidewalk sign permit. Okay, next, there's opportunity for public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission? Seeing no one. Are there any? Oh, we do have someone.
I have one thing I'd like to talk about on the consent agenda.
Okay, state your name for us, please.
Jerry Jensen.
Okay, go ahead.
I have one item on the consent agenda I'd like to talk about, so.
It's on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to that in a minute.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Any commission comments? Seeing none. Staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
Okay. The next item is approval of minutes. We have draft January nineteen, twenty seventeen, Planning Commission Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? That passes unanimously. Now, we're going to get to the consent calendar, and we have three items on the consent calendar because of different conflicts that commissioners have. We're going to take them one at a time, and we also will allow anyone in the audience who either wants to comment on an item or wants to remove it from the consent agenda to do so. So the first item is for a seven oh eight Capitola Avenue. Is anyone that would like to remove this from the consent agenda? Start with.
I would like to add one additional condition to it, so I don't know if we need to remove it, to talk about it, or, and what my condition would be is that if they end up having a parking problem with twenty classes of twenty-five people, I would like staff to have the authority to reduce the class size to twenty.
I don't know, I think, I don't think we should do that by consent.
Okay.
If you want, okay, we'll pull that one. So continuing on the consent agenda, the next item is Three Thirty-two Riverview Avenue, and I'm going to be recusing myself from this one. Before I do so, I'd like to make a comment, though, which is that, for those who don't know the history of this period of Capitola, after the yacht harbor was created, it caused Capitola's beach to disappear, and Capitola went into an economic depression for a period of time because there was no beach and no economy, and stores were vacant and so forth. And this particular property was the first new building in Capitola after the beach was restored, when the stone jetties were, that was the solution to that problem, was to create those stone jetties, and the beach came back, and then this was the first new construction in Capitola. So it has kind of a historic element to it. But with that, I will recuse myself.
Okay.
And I need to recuse myself as well because I own property within three hundred feet of that location.
Okay. So are the two of you going to leave?
No, no.
Okay. We're looking at the application at Three Two Two Riverview Avenue. We want to have a staff presentation.
It's a consent item.
It's a consent item, yeah.
Anybody want to pull this?
No.
Anyone in the audience want to pull this item? Okay, I'll, somebody make a motion.
I'll move to approve it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the third item on the consent agenda is Three Hundred Plum Street. Is anyone recusing themselves or pulling this item? Anyone in the audience? Okay, do I have a motion?
Which one did the gentleman?
I think that's when Jerry wanted to talk.
Jerry, which item were you interested in?
A.
Okay. So do I have a motion on Four C, Three Hundred Plum Street?
I'll move C.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that is approved. So we, Item Five-A has been withdrawn, and Item Four-A will take its place. So we'll now have a public hearing on seven oh eight Capitola Avenue, application number seventeen dash zero one-one. Staff report, please.
Okay, thank you, Planning Commission. This evening before you is a conditional use permit for a new yoga studio located at seven oh eight Capitola Avenue. This is in the neighborhood commercial zoning district up the street, in close proximity to Gail's Bakery and the market across the street. Here's an overview of the site. The yellow is indicating the building in which the yoga studio will be located in, and as you can see, it's located along Capitola Avenue, and there is a lot of parking on the site. It is a mixed-use site. The yoga studio will take up the majority of the floor plan. They plan to have a lobby by the back, and then also a flex space that can be utilized for, they're saying, a meditation room or individual one-on-one classes with folks, but just a flex space that can work with the yoga studio. So in terms of parking, this table outlines the different uses that are within the plaza. Currently, there's a restaurant, the Cookhouse Restaurant. There is salon and office space, as well as one residential unit. So there's fifty-two onsite spaces. Currently, the code requires thirty-four of these to be utilized by the other uses in the plaza, so that leaves eighteen spaces. There was recently, actually, a parking study that was done for the possibility of a brewery moving into the site, which showed that if they increased, if they had added some additional parking in an area that could be converted to parking, I can go back to the site plan to show you where that would be. So there's, within that application, there was a need for additional parking, in which they could show this area being converted to parking in the future, so that could be an option as well, is providing more parking if necessary. But under this application, the use isn't as high as a brew pub with a yoga studio, and at one space per one twenty, it's a little bit, it's twice, it's not as intense as a restaurant, but it's also not as low as a personal service establishment or an office space. We thought this could meet the need with eighteen parking spaces. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the yoga studio at seven oh eight Capitola Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval and the findings in the staff report. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? If not, this is a public hearing, and so anyone in the public, well, first the applicant? Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Anything? Okay. All right, well, we'll open the public hearing, then the applicant, apparently.
Is approaching.
Is approaching.
Good evening, I'm Anna Marie Gotti. I am the landlord.
And I'm Carrie Burr, the yoga studio owner.
Okay, so you want to sign the sheet, please?
Sure.
And?
Yes, so we're hoping that we can proceed. We've had a vacancy at that space for some time, and I believe that we held out for the right tenant, the right thing for the, for the neighborhood.
Yeah, we're just really excited about the neighborhood. We've been speaking with a lot of people in the area, and they're all really excited to see the yoga and everything we're going to be putting into that space, which is meditation, yoga, that type of related activity. We don't think it's going to be super intensive in usage, but we do think it will be a really good addition to the community of Capitola with all the research we've done in our business plan, just in terms of rounding out the offerings of what Capitola has to offer and bringing in maybe a little bit even more that type of offering into the, into the community. And, yeah, good tax revenue and good for the city in general, yeah.
Questions?
I have one question, Carrie. Do you have, now that you're up here, any idea about the numbers of people who attend in the evenings versus during the daytime?
Well, so we've been actually talking a lot with Divinity Tree, who are established yoga studio owners over in Santa Cruz, and so we have some pretty good ideas of what has been going on in Santa Cruz or, you know, in this area. And what I would say in terms of evening time versus daytime, I think it goes up a little bit, but not substantially. So they're saying, their numbers and other people we spoke to as well, that in the first year or so, per class, we'd be looking at around five to ten people per class, and then even into the second year, they don't, they say that it actually takes quite a bit to get even another five people regularly coming. So even, you know, daytime or nighttime, we're still looking at around maybe like ten to fifteen people even after the second year per class. So it's not a huge load, it really isn't. They say that it actually takes a long time and pretty, like, really kind of high-powered teachers to bring in anywhere around twenty, twenty-five, which is what you were maybe a little worried about. They said it just takes so much to get that amount of people in there, so that was why we were kind of putting it as a max, just to say, hey, it could happen, but we don't necessarily expect that. So it seems like per class, the average, even in their established studio, is around, probably around fifteen people, and they've been there for six years. So, and I think that that is pretty true throughout the day.
Okay. Maybe, maybe I should state my concern so you, so you understand. I think you're a wonderful use. I'm really glad you're going in there. I think this is going to be great for Capitola. When they do the parking numbers, you know, it comes out that there's eighteen spaces dedicated to you. And personally, I think that that's going to be plenty of spaces. My only request was if a parking problem did develop, rather than having to come back to the Planning Commission, that staff would have the opportunity to work with you and say, you know, could you keep your classes down to twenty people rather than twenty-five people? But that would only come up if, you know, people started complaining because there was a parking problem.
Right, and I'd like to comment on that. As you saw the drawing, we do have some space that we could use for extra parking spaces if it became necessary.
So, I mean, I'd be very happy if we just said in there that if a parking problem arose, then staff could work with you to put in additional parking spaces.
Yes, yes, if we, if we discuss it, if it becomes a problem and I'm approached, I would definitely be willing to work with the planning department and see what we could do.
So that was my question, was about the area that apparently is available for additional parking. I mean, is that used for parking now even though it's not paved?
No, it's, it has gravel, and for the last year and a half, two years, we've been using about four parking spaces right there. Previous tenants that had big trucks. And so we, we have used about four car spaces of that dirt lot.
Have you had a site planned so you know how many spaces you could actually get on there if you needed to, if you were to improve it?
We want to, we would keep it, we would just gravel. Are you suggesting paving it?
I don't, is there reason why you wouldn't do that?
I don't know at this time. I don't know what the specifics are, or the, if we make it permanent parking forever. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
That's just been a concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public, looks like? We do?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Dennis Martin, and I came here to speak in favor of this project. If, this, that, that's, that building has been vacant for two years. It's real difficult to get a client with the shape of the building, what they're doing there. I'm the closest neighbor to that building. I have no problem with parking or that kind of issue with my, my property, and people do flower from the donut shop and otherwise. The other thing to remember is that, that the cookhouse is only open till two in the afternoon, so there's no evening traffic for them. So there is some kind of trade-off. Morning will probably be the busiest time. I don't think it's real fair to condition the success of a business on number, or number of parking spots. It should be determined right now and say, this is the number that we need to have for the space, but have the worry through the years that I become successful, I got to go provide more parking. I don't think it's very fair to commerce or to the applicant, but I encourage you to pass this and give us a nice standing in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Jensen, Four Ten Bay Avenue. I am, live in the neighborhood, and I'm in support of the yoga studio. I think it's a great place for it to go and everything to have, you know, more opportunities for people to walk to and stuff like that. My concern was, living in the neighborhood, is, I came in, met with Ryan, I saw the parking requirement for eighteen, which was great and everything. I was wondering, it can't be a condition that they have to use the eighteen parking spots? Because even though we all think logically that that might, would make the most sense that obviously they would use parking, there are other businesses in the area, in the neighborhood, and sometimes they don't use a parking lot, and they park on the street, and so they leave open eighteen parking spots in the place, which sounds like reverse logic, but it does happen.
Yeah, so the way things work in Capitola in a shopping center is that there are certain rules in terms of how many parking spaces the shopping center is required to have depending on the uses, but they're not specifically designated, like this space is for this shop, this one's for this.
But, I mean, if, if it was a requirement, they, they meet that there's enough parking, but they don't have to use it?
Well, it's public parking, so I don't know how we tell people how they can't park in public park, and I would assume, having gone into that business area before, that it's much easier to go find a real parking spot where you don't have to worry about it, but I don't know how we dictate that they can't park in public, in a public parking spot.
Or they'd be requested or to use their parking, their parking lot first.
Well, maybe the tenant could, I guess.
Well, you can't prevent someone from parking in a legal spot on the street because where they're going, you want them to use the spot there. We just, that's too much management. Thank you.
Voice of my concern.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Yes, please.
So, my name's Rusty Ingram. I live at Six One Eight Burlingame Avenue, which is right at the corner of Bay and Burlingame. And I'm, I wanted to comment on what Jerry was talking about. The issue that we have is that there are other businesses in the area that have quite a bit of traffic, and the issue is, is that they don't always use the parking spaces associated with that business. And while they do use public parking spaces where they can, they also park in spaces that are designated as permit parking, and the police department just doesn't have the resources to try to enforce permit parking and things like that. So it affects those of us who live close to those buildings. So I think what would be useful is to have the employees of that business, as well as the patrons of the business, try to use the parking that's associated with the business rather than overflow. Because I know in some of the other businesses in the area, what happens is that those spaces associated with the business are really mostly reserved for patrons, and the employees are encouraged to park in areas around the business, in the local area, which affects us as residents. So I think something along those lines of trying to make sure that there's enough parking, not just for the patrons, but for the employees of the business, for the suppliers of the business, so that there's adequate areas for people to have loading zones, et cetera, would be very useful. Because we're the ones who are affected.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now we'll close the public hearing and comments from commissioners.
I have one question that I probably should have asked earlier, but a question of staff. Are there any projects that you are aware of today where we have any limitations on class size or number of patrons based on parking?
Not that I can think of. There is a bar studio that was open, that was, that opened behind Burger King, and I don't think, we did, we definitely didn't limit the number of patrons on that one, and then also Orange Theory recently opened, and they were both just based on parking studies and whether or not there was adequate parking onsite with the mixed use.
Okay, so I'm going to continue with my comments from that. All due respect to the concern, and I understand that, I'm really not comfortable when it meets code and they've got enough spaces for the use, limiting it or asking staff to change the, to dictate a class size. If they're that successful, I think there are some other alternatives that could be brought into play, and if it became enough of an issue that we needed to change the code for the use, then that should come back to us. But other than that, I think, if it fits, it works. We're not, we're not granting any excess variance or exception. So those are just my comments. And I'm very much in favor of the use. I know that there are a lot of people that will probably, from the neighborhood, come and take advantage of it, and a large number of them will probably walk, so. And I hope you get twenty-five people in a class.
So, it looks like, are you here for the public portion of this?
Yes, I just had one comment. My name's Jonathan with Gemona Construction. I've been doing the last few projects in that parking lot. I've had three or four guys out there every day, and I just wanted to throw my two cents out there. So most of the back parking lot on the plan view you had up there earlier, that whole back parking lot is barely ever used. The spaces are almost always empty. I've had three or four guys there, were working in the parking lot, we've set up in the parking lot, never had a problem with someone driving through. The amount of parking there is really phenomenal for Capitola. We all know that there's really, none of these businesses have, have adequate parking, none of them around here. This would probably be the only one. I mean, there is a ton of parking in that parking lot.
Hey, thank you. We'll reclose the public hearing. Okay, back to the commission. Wait, wait, all right. So the way we're going to do this, just for future items on the agenda, is we open the public hearing, everyone who wants to talk speaks at the public hearing, we then close the public hearing, and the commission takes over. So that way we will get through the agenda in a reasonable period of time. So let's stick with the commission at this point. Okay.
Thank you, Ed. I had a question about, is it a reasonable condition that require that the applicant at least have their employees park within the available parking lot?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure of the legality of it. I mean, just listening to some of the testimony of your fellow commissioners about requiring somebody or prohibiting them from parking on a public street strikes me as a problem. And then in terms of monitoring and enforcing that, I think it would be difficult for staff to figure out exactly who is it that's parking where, and so I would have concerns from that standpoint as well.
Okay, so that would be the same for members of the public as well as the employees of the establishment?
Yeah.
And that, and I heard what Susan's recommended additional condition was that just the staff would have the ability to go in and work with the applicant, and it sounded like the applicant was willing to do that. And I don't think it necessarily means that they have to reduce their class size. It could be moving into that greater lot or looking at other creative solutions at the time, but having some ability to have the staff go in and meet the neighbors' concerns and discuss it, talk about it, and come up with solutions. And so that's the way I viewed it, and to me, I think that that's, if it's phrased in that way, would be a reasonable condition, and it may alleviate everybody's concern at this time, just so that there's some ability for us to go back and work on it collectively and try to come up with some solution, so.
But doesn't that go without saying that staff, whenever they get complaints, they have the ability to work with the people involved in the complaints and see if they can, can work something out? I just feel, I don't feel good about singling out this business and treating them differently than we treat other businesses.
So the reason, there are several reasons why I brought this up. I actually had three different people contact me expressing concerns about the parking, and one example that gets used is the shopping center where Outdoor World is located, and a yoga studio went into that center, and now the other tenants in that complex are concerned because when the classes are going on, their customers have nowhere to park. And, you know, in reading the application and hearing what the applicant had to say, they have eighteen parked, technically, they have eighteen parking spaces that are for this use. And so, you know, my only concern was, you know, if they did have a class of twenty-five by the time, you have a class of twenty-five, you have staff there, you know, they're, they need more parking than they have onsite. I go back and I say, I think this is a great use, and I in no way want to stop them from going in the center. I think they're going to be a real asset to Capitola. I was just trying to figure out some solution, as Sam said, that would give people some comfort, that we recognize there potentially could be a parking issue, and if there is a parking issue, rather than it having to come all the way back to the city council for us to reconsider the use permit, that we put some flexibility in there for staff to work with them on coming up with a solution.
Well, I have a.
You know, I mean, we don't, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this tonight. You know, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to, you know, back away if the other commissioners don't think it's not something.
I think it's good that you, I think it's good you pulled this. I think it was an item that warrants a discussion.
I have a couple of comments. One, first of all, I'm totally empathetic to the neighbors in the neigh, I mean, I get that, it's a troubling intersection area that, on the corner there, and I totally get that. So I don't want my other comments to think that I'm not paying attention to that. I think, I think the yoga and that shopping center is a completely different situation. Not that at some point it couldn't, and I, I hope that it comes to a time that they have to reconsider parking, but that shopping center is really underutilized for parking most of the time, and I, I don't think by putting restrictions on that tenant is going to help your situation that you guys face day to day. And I, if I could be any part of the solution in your area, I would love to do that, because I think that's a, I totally believe that you guys put up with an area that's just an impact into that community that, you know, I don't know if we ever really looked that close to it and how it kind of grew into that situation, but my, my perception is that putting restrictions on a tenant in this type, that isn't really going to help your situation, your cause, or I would be totally on board with that. I'm a little hesitant to put restrictions on, on tenants like that, understanding that there is more area for parking to expand. I think that, you know, we, we live in a complaint-driven world today that Rich and his staff have to deal with, and so, and I know you are astute neighbors who would pay attention, and if you notice anything that that was been an impact, that I hope that that would get back to our staff, and then that dialogue could, could happen with the tenant and the property owner. But, and having known the property owner a little bit, I, I think they'd be more than happy to take care of the situation, and I would hope that the tenant would be able to have twenty-five people in her class. But with that being said, I don't, I don't want to, personally, I don't see putting restrictions in. I think that discussion can be had, and that agreement could be had, and if it gets to a point where it is an issue, like they're experiencing with the other businesses, then, then I think it should come back to the Planning Commission, the city council, to address that issue. So I'm not really in favor of putting additional restrictions in there.
Oh, okay.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Susan, could I, could I ask a question?
Sure.
To staff?
Mm-hmm.
Does the city have, let's say hypothetically, that they're fabulously successful, and the other business in there, and that's what we want, is everyone to be fabulously successful. This is, but, which means there's the downsides that come along with that. Does the city, if we don't have it as a condition, does the city have any? Does the city, if we don't have it as a condition, does the city have any ability to come back in and even if there are complaints, to somehow forge a solution or resolution?
With limitations. I mean, I, I think our first attempt is usually the power of persuasion, to try to work with people, cooperate, find solutions to problems. Beyond that, if there's a violation of a conditional use permit condition, then that would be a matter that could be presented before the planning commission to amend or revoke a permit. But if it's simply a product of success and they're complying with the permit, I'm not sure we would have a lot of authority to require them to change their operations.
But I assume that the proposal was though, that if, that the city would be able to go and work with the applicant to come up with a solution. And I know the power of persuasion is one mechanism, but unless you have some leverage, persuasion sometimes can only go so far. And then you're just left with the neighbors and the, and the, and the business owner at odds with one another and at an impasse. So, which scenario is most likely going to be able to help us to mediate or intervene to solve future parking problems?
So, I think under Commissioner Westman's suggestion, you know, staff would have the ability to negotiate some type of agreement with them. If it were worded in such a way that staff shall have the authority to require the improvement of on-site areas to provide additional parking, that little dirt area that we looked at, that would be something that we could require, but I think it would have to be written as a condition in order for us to have that authority to make them do that.
Yeah, okay. So, it seems too, the condition to me seems too vague to work with the applicant. I, I'm sorry. I support the application, by the way. I think the only way you can really control this kind of a use is to mandate class, maximum class size, which I'm not suggesting we do. And from, by doing that, you then affect the amount of parking. And I think that's come up in some other health use types of applications. But, I mean, the health industry is one of our most thriving industries in Santa Cruz and in other places now. And, you know, they, they do use a lot of parking and there are other places in the county where there are health-related uses that they have serious parking problems. And that may happen here too, but I mean, I mean, that's just.
Well, another concern I have is you're putting the burden on one tenant in a, in a multi-use tenant property. So, to me, I just, I mean, I just.
Property owner, you're right. The property owner has some, not only responsibility, but motivation to deal with the problem also because they have other tenants who would not be happy if their patrons, that's what's happening at 41st where the yoga studio is so successful.
It seems to me that the property owner should be in the front line of fixing the problem rather than having multiple tenants come to the city and have us try and fix it for them.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval as, as is.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
One opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, just, I, I think it would have been reasonable to, I mean, the applicant was willing, the neighbors had a concern. It was a way for us to maybe address it and to give them some relief. That's the only reason I'm voting no. Otherwise, I think it's a great use and I wish you the greatest success.
So, that passes four to one. Next item is 4025 Bromer Street. No, this is, 5B is the 41st Avenue Master Sign Program for Kings Plaza. Staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you is an application for a master sign program for the Kings Plaza Shopping Center located at 1475, 1501, 1549, and 1601, 41st Avenue. The proposed master sign program includes specifications for new wall signs, monument signs, and directional signs throughout the center. The shopping center is located in the CC Community Commercial Zoning District. The center is bordered by the Capitola Mall to the north, shopping centers to the east, a hotel and storage yard to the south, and low-intensity commercial and medium-density residential uses to the west. The shopping center is roughly 500,000 square feet, occupied by retail shops, restaurants, a grocery store, and a movie theater. As you can see, the property is situated at the corner of three streets, 38th Avenue, Capitola Road, and 41st Avenue, and it has considerable frontage along each of these streets. Visibility from 41st Avenue has been a challenge for the shopping center's many tenants due to the locations of the buildings being set back far from 41st Avenue. So, the purpose of this master sign program is to increase tenant visibility along 41st, improve wayfinding, and develop a cohesive sign program for the center. So, master sign programs establish material, letter style, height, color, and illumination of signs for shopping centers. The existing center does not have a master sign program. So, what that means is currently a new tenant can replace an existing sign face kind for kind, but any design, size, or location change requires planning commission approval. So, the approval of this program would allow individual signed permits to then be issued by the community development director when in compliance with the master sign program So, first, wall signs. The proposed program would specify the allowed location, size, and design of wall signs for each tenant throughout the center. The program proposes that the new wall signs be internally illuminated cabinet signs. The size of each of these signs is based on the code allowance of one square foot of sign area for each one linear foot of business frontage, with a few variations for size consistency along each elevation and for the end cap tenants. Pursuant to the 41st Avenue Design Guidelines, individual letters attached to a wall are preferred to cabinet signs. However, the municipal code does not specifically prohibit cabinet wall signs. Staff surveyed 41st Avenue and found that a majority of the properties comply with these guidelines and use individual letters and not cabinet signs. However, there are several existing cabinet signs along 41st Avenue, as shown in this slide. Additionally, a majority of the existing signs within the Kings Plaza are cabinet signs, and so the applicant is proposing to continue using cabinet signs throughout the center. The proposed program would allow one, would allow each tenant one wall sign above their primary storefront, except that end cap tenants be allowed two wall signs on each corner of the building. Tenants could choose between replacing existing wall sign with a new wall sign of the same size and design, or constructing a new sign which meets the design requirements of the master sign program. So, next we'll discuss monument signs. The shopping center has two existing monument signs, one along 41st Avenue, shown here, and one theater sign along Capitola Road, shown here. The program proposes to remove the 15-foot-high monument sign along 41st Avenue and preserve the theater sign. So, the yellow star on this slide shows the location of the existing theater sign that would be preserved. The program proposes eight new monument signs, shown with these circles, throughout the perimeter of the complex, four along 41st Avenue, two along Capitola Road, and two along 38th Avenue. The code does limit the number of monument signs to one per each building frontage, which would allow three. The applicant is requesting additional monument signs. So, the signs along 41st Avenue and Capitola Road would be eight feet tall and 48 square feet in size, shown on the left. The monument signs on 38th Avenue would be five feet tall and 35 square feet in size, both of which complies with code requirements. The monument signs would be double-sided, internally illuminated, and use faux stone for the base. The code requires that internally illuminated monument signs shall be limited to the use of individually lighted letters with opaque or wood backer materials, while the applicant is proposing cabinet-style sign faces without individually lit letters on the monument sign. Additionally, the applicant is requesting flexibility to list anywhere from four to six tenants on each of these monument signs, while the code allows a maximum of four. So, staff surveyed the surrounding area and found five existing cabinet-style monument signs with internal illumination, which contradicts the code. First of which, the Whole Foods monument sign at 1710 41st Avenue. It's an aluminum cabinet sign with interior illumination, and that was approved in 2008. Next, there's a Takara monument sign. Again, it's an illuminated cabinet sign, and this was approved in 1999. The Brown Ranch Marketplace monument sign on Claire Street also uses internally illuminated cabinet signs, and this was approved in 92. Capitola Station monument sign, this is over on 41st, and this was approved in 2011. And lastly, the Best Western monument sign, also on 41st, has aluminum cabinet signs and is approved in 1998. Since most monument signs in the surrounding area use the required individually lit channel letters, staff has added a condition of approval requiring that the Kings Plaza monument signs also use individually lit letters. And that's currently a condition of approval in the staff report. So, staff survey also found that the Capitola Mall, which is roughly four times the size of Kings Plaza, has five monument signs along the four streets which border the property, and the signs are shown in blue. Staff feels that eight new proposed monument signs at Kings Plaza is too many for this site. Based on the survey of the surrounding properties, staff recommends allowing no more than four monument signs in addition to the theater sign. And so, that would be an allowance for two along 41st Avenue, one along the, along with the existing theater sign on Capitola Road, and one on 38th Avenue. So, in anticipation of the question of visual clutter, staff requested that the applicant construct temporary story poles to show the height and location en massing of each of the proposed monument signs. Last Friday, eight of these signs were constructed. This slide shows just the four proposed locations. The sign code currently allows flexibility for commercial sites, which are geographically, geographically constrained if the signage is necessary for the site to stay competitive with surrounding area, and if the signage will not have a negative effect on the surrounding area. Staff recognizes that there are visibility challenges into the site, and therefore findings can be made for the additional signage. So, recommendations, staff recommends allowing a maximum of four new monument signs, one more than what is allowed by code, so that 41st Avenue can locate, or can construct two monument signs instead of one. This would allow the site to stay competitive with the surrounding sites while not visually cluttering the area. Staff also recommends allowing up to six tenants to be listed on each monument sign. This way, the center can list all of its tenants on the recommended four monument signs. Center currently has 21 businesses. Six tenants per monument sign would allow 24 tenants to be listed. And lastly, as stated before, staff recommends an added condition of approval, which was in the staff report, requiring the individually lit letters for the monument signs. So, lastly, the application also proposes three directional signs throughout the parking lot of the center. Each directional sign will be four feet nine inches tall, and it would be similarly designed as the monument signs. These proposed directional signs comply with code requirements. So, the applicant requested that a condition be added to allow the owners to build the new monument signs before removing the existing wooden monument sign along 41st Avenue. Staff recommends incorporating the following condition for added clarity. The existing wooden monument sign on 41st must be removed prior to the installation of any new monument signs along 41st Avenue. So, that way they could still construct the ones on 38th and Capitola Road. In conclusion, staff recommends the planning commission approve of the master sign program with added conditions and limitations for the Kings Plaza Shopping Center. I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant and owners are here as well.
Questions, Ryan, staff?
Just a clarification. Ryan, when you were going through the list of the other, the Whole Foods, the Takara, Brown Ranch, Best Western, those were examples of cabinet signs? Did I get that correct?
Yes, example of cabinet signs that do not have individually lit letters that were also approved by planning commission that I could find record of.
That you could find, okay. All right. Thank you.
One question. Some of those you were saying were aluminum cabinet signs. Does that basically mean that the light, when it's internally illuminated, that the light is really shining mostly through the letters and not through the aluminum?
That's my understanding with the aluminum signs, but we do have somebody from the sign company that's here, and I'm sure he could answer the questions a little better than I could.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant or applicant's representative present?
My name is Benjamin Au, and my family owns Kings Plaza Shopping Center. We've been active developers, business owners, and property managers of Kings Plaza Shopping Center since the mid-1960s. I'd like to start by thanking Katie and Ryan very much from the planning department for working directly with my family and me on the master sign plan. It's been about a year now of active work, so thank you so much for going back and forth with us. And they've provided invaluable feedback and guidance, and we believe it's culminated in an MSP that provides for attractive and effective signage for Kings Plaza tenants that's consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. My family and I decided to pursue the MSP because our tenants asked us repeatedly to help them obtain signage specifically along 41st Avenue. They cannot understand how one of the largest shopping centers in Capitola, comprising over 11 acres of land, having four large buildings, many of which are set back far from the street and blocked by mature landscaping and trees, and 21 different businesses can only have one monument sign along 41st Avenue with only two tenants on it. They tell us how hard it is to run retail businesses, and they plead with us to help them obtain signage along 41st Avenue, which they know will inform customers of their location and boost their business. We often hear about patrons who discover our less visible tenants for the first time years after they open for business. This is something we're trying to correct. We're here tonight to ask you to think local and help our many small and locally-owned businesses succeed amidst an ever-challenging retail environment by approving our MSP as proposed and providing badly-needed signage to our tenants. We are asking for four monument signs along 41st Avenue, two monument signs along 38th, and two new monument signs along Capitola Road. This new signage will allow us to provide badly-needed visibility to tenants in Kings Plaza Shopping Center who currently have little or no visibility along the surrounding streets. The proposed number and size of signs is consistent with neighboring properties, will increase the visibility and viability of our tenants, especially our small local businesses, and is consistent with the character of the area. Kings Plaza is located on one of the busiest corners in the county, and over 11 acres, and at over 11 acres, it is also one of the largest retail parcels in the city. Because Kings Plaza is so large and has so much street frontage, there currently are far fewer signs per foot of frontage compared with other nearby retail centers. For example, there are four parcels directly across 41st Avenue from Kings Plaza on the same lineal frontage with prominent signage, including three monument signs and one large building sign. Thus, four monument signs on Kings Plaza is consistent with the surrounding area. Moreover, if Kings Plaza's four buildings were on four separate parcels, like the properties across the street, we'd already have the right to build four monuments. So, it would be unfair to punish our tenants because they are in a large center on one parcel as opposed to a building on a small parcel. It is logical and reasonable and consistent with signage of surrounded properties to allow four signs along 41st Avenue, two signs on 38th Avenue, and two new signs on Capitola Road. Each of the proposed monument signs is smaller than allowable under current city code, and based on the example signs which we've had up for the past week throughout Kings Plaza, the sign sizes are modest in scale and just large enough to provide tasteful but meaningful visibility to our tenants. The proposed signs are a fraction of the size of the current Rite Aid Lucky sign, which was actually at one point in time a third bigger than it is now with a third tenant sign. sign tines on it. And combined, all four of the new proposed monument signs along 41st Avenue are of similar size to the one sign that we have currently. The proposed new monument signs are significantly shorter and set back from the street than recent art installations in the medians, such as the groupings of kayaks and surfboard installations nearby. Moreover, the proposed new monument signs are approximately 60% smaller than the adjacent Shell Station Monument at 41st and Capitola Road. Staff's recommendation of only two 8-byapproximately-six-foot monument signs for Kings Plaza along 41st Avenue would mean that our 150,000-foot shopping center on over 11 acres with 21 tenants would have smaller and less sign-square footage on 41st Avenue than the Shell Station, a 2,000-foot gas station on less than an acre of land. This is not equitable or reasonable. 41st is a long, vibrant, commercial corridor that is the main retail center for Capitola. It is important for residents and tourists needing to buy groceries, pick up something from a pharmacy, get a new tool at a hardware store, grab a meal or see a movie. Our MSP has been designed to conform to the energetic character of the area and provide our tenants with visibility on neighboring streets without being a distraction or overwhelming the senses. The example signs that we installed demonstrate that amidst a busy, heavily-trafficked 41st Avenue and Capitola corridor, the number and size of the signs is suitable to the character of the area. Our MSP has been carefully designed to be a positive outcome for all stakeholders. Residents and visitors will more easily be able to identify businesses in Kings Plaza. Our tenants will have increased visibility in business. The city will enjoy increased tax revenues. We will have happier tenants and customers, a win-win outcome for all. I urge you to please support this positive outcome for the entire community by approving the MSP for Kings Plaza Shopping Center with the elimination of the conditions of approval, as my brother Andrew will detail now. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Hello, my name is Andrew Au, and I'm here on behalf of Kings Plaza. Thank you, planning commission and staff. We respectfully request an elimination or reduction of many of the conditions of approval. With respect to proposed COA Number Five, we request that the requirement to use additional plants be eliminated. Most of the signs are going into landscaped areas already, and due to years of drought and water restrictions, many plants have died. Moreover, installing new plants around a sign that is intended to communicate information to the public is counterproductive. New plants would increase water consumption and run counter to our and the city's efforts to be environmentally responsible. We propose that we be allowed to add non-irrigated landscaping that is attractive and environmentally-friendly, such as rocks, wood chips, or similar materials. With respect to proposed COA Number Six, we request that the requirement to obtain planning commission approval of signs larger than 75 square feet be removed. Such a requirement would make it more time-consuming and costly for new major tenants to open for business at Kings Plaza. We believe that is not in our, our or the city's best interest, and believe that administrative review and approval is sufficient. With respect to proposed COA Number Seven, we request that the reduction of sign size be deleted. The standard is one square foot of sign per one lineal foot, and we believe that's the appropriate maximum for new wall signs on both the I-South and N-North elevations, even if such maximum area is never used. These next three issues are the most important to us. With respect to proposed COA Number Eight, we request that this requirement to include channel letter signs be eliminated. Channel letter signs are significantly more expensive than other similar-looking signs and limit the size and artistry of words and graphics. They also take far longer to make. Because the concern seems to be with the amount of light that the sign is illuminated, we would be willing to compromise by having opaque backgrounds on the proposed Lexan sign faces, which would achieve a similar result without the same cost. The proposed COA would increase the cost of starting a business or moving a business to Kings Plaza Shopping Center. Given the challenges of successfully running brick-and-mortar businesses anywhere, but especially in coastal California, we strongly believe that this is a misguided COA and would increase costs of tenants and potential tenants, and there would be no positive aspects that wouldn't be addressed by our proposal. With respect to proposed COA Number Ten, we request that the reduction of monument signs be removed. As my brother mentioned, the proposed number is an appropriate amount, and our tenants very strongly desire and need 41st Avenue signage. Finally, we ask that you not implement the new proposed condition of approval that would require us to remove the existing Lucky Rite Aid sign before we install any of the other monument signs on 41st Avenue. Unfortunately, we are bound by our lease with Lucky's, which was signed decades ago with their predecessor in interest, Alpha Beta. The lease states that we cannot make changes to the existing monument sign without their consent. We are working with Lucky's in good faith, and will continue to do so and agree to do so, in which, and if we receive their consent, we will replace the existing Lucky Rite Aid monument sign with the proposed new monument sign. However, if we cannot obtain their consent, we would like to be able to move forward with the other signs either, oh, excuse me. We believe that it would be unfair and unwise to have the fates of so many of our tenants in the hands of a giant company without local ties. We would be happy to agree to a condition that states we have the right to install the other signs as proposed, subject to our replacing the existing Lucky Rite Aid monument sign as soon as Lucky consents or as soon as we have the right to replace the sign. Thank you for your consideration of these points and for your service.
Don't forget to sign in, Andrew. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this issue?
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm David Bianchi, and I'm director for Family Service Agency of the Central Coast. And normally, I might be wearing my nonprofit hat and speak to the Au family's considerable generosity and philanthropy to support vulnerable people in the community through agencies like mine, but I'm actually here tonight as a tenant of the center. My auxiliary, the Daisy Auxiliary operates a store, a resale store in the center, and there's over 100 women involved who all give their time and energy. There's not one paid member of the auxiliary, and they operate that store year-round to support our mental health services at the agency. I've been appreciative of the Au's efforts to modernize and upgrade the look and feel of the center and the mix of tenants, and I hope this evening that you'll be supportive of this. We're in one of the less-visible spots, we're a relatively small store. It's always difficult for us to advertise and get people to connect as to where we are, and we're probably one of those folks that, you know, years later, they'll say, "Oh, I didn't know you were there." And it's important for us to get new customers because even though we're raising funds, we're still a business, you know, and the women that put in that energy and effort that they take away from their time and, and their families, they want to know that they're investing that for a good cause and they're getting a maximum return. So I urge you to be supportive of their efforts here this evening to increase the visibility for all the tenants in the complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Warren King. I'm a tenant in the complex as well. I hadn't realized it until I was asked to speak this evening, but I've been in that complex for 27 years. Prior to that, I was in the Capitola Mall for 16 years. I have a pet store called Pet Emporium. To my surprise, I get people every week coming down 41st Avenue saying they cannot find me. They have no idea where we are, and I have to explain to them that if they will just go until they hit the Shell Station and take a right and come all the way to the back of the mall, I'm near Palace. I'm overwhelmed at how difficult it is for them to find us, and I'm hoping that you will give just consideration to the Au family to improve our situation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brent Jacobs. My wife, Renelle, and I just opened Spin Cycle Laundry Lounge, which is located just behind Sees Candy. Brand-new, we've been open a month. I think our business faces out on Capitola Road, so any signage on 41st, which is obviously everybody knows a very busy street, would certainly help our business get off to a good start and be famously, or fabulously successful, we hope. So we would like to see you approve this signage on 41st.
Good evening, members of the planning commission and city staff. My name's Roy Trowbridge, and I'm the president and co-owner of Palace Art and Office Supply, and we've been a tenant in Kings Plaza Center for 25 years, and we've been at the back of the center for that time, and much of what Benjamin described in the conversations, we certainly get some credit for asking for the signage. And, and we too share the issue of having people find us in spite of the fact that we've been there so many years and do considerable advertising, but we would greatly appreciate the opportunity to have our name visible on the streets and, and make our center easier to find. We've got really great businesses there, and this would be very meaningful improvement to our center and to helping the public find the opportunities there to shop. Thank you very much.
My name is Quinn Cormier, and I co-own the newly-opened East End Gastropub, which is also located in the Kings Plaza Center. We opened in March 2016, and we've also been a tenant that's been asking, requesting, pleading to have some signage on 41st. We frequently hear from customers that they have a difficult time finding us, and often people will come in and say, "I didn't even know you guys were here. I didn't know you existed. I thought this was still Tony and Alvis." So we, we definitely need some signage on 41st. If the planning commission reduces the amount of proposed monument signs, we feel that businesses like ours, small local businesses, will suffer the most. We urge that the planning commission think local and support locally-owned businesses by approving all of the proposed monument signs. I think that the proposed plan to reduce the 41st signs and continue to have the 38th signs is a sort of an unfair comparison for visibility for the businesses in the center. We're located in the sort of deep corner by the movie theater, so unless you are knowing, unless you know where you're going, you're definitely not going to stumble upon us from 41st Avenue. And we're excited to be in Capitola, and we want to let more people know about our establishment, so thank you.
Any other speakers? Ben, would you mind coming back up? I think that, before we close the public hearing, I think that one or more of the commissioners had some questions, but I see somebody else wants to speak first.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Thanks for letting me speak. I brought a fun little photo, oh, excuse me, my name is William Au, so I'm part of the Au family. I brought a fun little photo prop to kind of give a little historical perspective of kind of what we're discussing. I figure maybe, can I hand it to you guys to look at it while I'm talking?
I'd just see it. I think this is the property way back when?
This is the property when we started. So to give you a little perspective, the road you see that has the eucalyptus grove on it is actually 41st Avenue. The road you see in behind is actually 38th Avenue, which is what we consider to be the back of the center. But for purposes, we're both really honored and proud that it was our grandparents that started this location in 1963 to create Kings Plaza Shopping Center. And I bet most people here probably don't even have a clue that it's called Kings Plaza Shopping Center or don't know why, and there's a fun story we can go to later, but I'll be brief. But as part of it, it was always known as that, but we used to have signage that would reflect that that was the case, and that was part of our advertising. Because our signage was so critical for the tenants to get exposure, and we, of course, try to get as much maximum exposure to the biggest tenants there, we reduced our signage exposing our name so that we could put the signage that it is there now. And like Ben mentioned, is that our prominent marquee sign on 41st Avenue used to be larger and had more information on it, but again, as sign ordinance has changed, and I recognize they wanted to be smaller and kind of more, kind of more sleek and elite, it got reduced. So as part of it, you know, my suggestion is, we would love to see you guys approve this sign proposal as modified as we're hoping to see it concluded. It is critical, because of the activities on 41st Avenue, that we get maximum exposure for our tenants on 41st and Capitola Road. 30th Avenue is a great bonus, and it's great that it can be added as part of it because it shows, you know, you can have so many signs, but 38th is a fraction of the activity and draw that comes into the center as 41st Avenue. And so, as part of it, in an environment, which again was tapped on by my brother Andrew, is that the retail environment is very challenging. It's in an economy that seems to be effectively booming, retail is still struggling, and part of it is because of all the online sales and shipping and the things that just make it so easy not to come to have that experience to shop in person. So as part of it, anything that maximizes exposure that will give people the ability to find the retailer and find them efficiently and easily is to their benefit. So that's of great importance, we believe, to them. The other part that's important is, the way we have it proposed is also, is a cost factor, and the cost factor gets reflected back on the tenants. And again, because times are hard for retail tenants, anything we can do to make the cost as reasonable as possible is really important. You know, if costs were no factor, we would love to do fancy designs that would be a separate box and lit a certain way, and those are, I think, ideal situations in a, in a condition where you're starting from completely fresh, but it would add many more magnitudes of cost to the sign package, and we just think that would be challenging for them, and we really do struggle and work hard to try to keep the cost down for the tenants that are at our center there and other properties that we have. So again, thank you for this consideration. We hope that you guys will approve the sign package the way we're hoping that it's going forward, and thank you for your time.
You want to ask your questions to him or Ben?
Andrew, actually.
Okay.
Sorry.
And I'll grab the photo afterwards. Thank you.
Oh, incidentally, did you know that the property across the street from your center was originally storage for Heather? That was the use.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't snag you when you were up here before.
No, no problem at all.
I didn't want to interrupt what was going on. My question has to do with the monument signs, and there, there is a limit in your work that on 38th Avenue, no tenant can be listed more than once on a monument sign. On 41st Avenue, what, what is your plan there? Is it each sign is going to list different tenants so that only, they're only on the sign one time on 41st Avenue, or?
I believe the plan is that no tenant will be represented more than once on one frontage. So there will be, we are hoping to get as many tenants as possible along 41st, and then some of those same tenants may be on 38th or Capitola, but not multiple instances along 41st or the other streets. So OSH could only be on one sign along 41st, one sign along Capitola, and one sign along 38th, just as an example. It could not be on two signs on 41st or any of the other frontages.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
It, it does. I'm going to back it up with a second question, though. Have you considered, I mean, OSH is very visible from Capitola Road. If they're listed on a monument sign on 41st Avenue, have you considered not listing them on the other frontages so that the signs can be simpler? I think the number of signs and the number of listings on each sign, in my mind, is going to add a lot of clutter, and when I drove by and I saw the size of the signs, they're so small, that I'm thinking if you had fewer on a single sign, you would be adding- if you had fewer on a single sign, you would be adding less clutter to the roadway.
I think the difficulty for us is getting as many as our tenants on 41st, as you mentioned, as possible with respect to clutter and smallness. If you would like to increase the size of the signs, we would love that. So, but that's the difficulty we're working with because if, kind of the really big, simple sign is the way it is right now, but only Lucky and Rite Aid have any exposure. So, all of our great other tenants don't have that right now.
My last question was the internal directional signs. Once you're in the parking lot, you pretty well see all of the signs that are on the top of the stores. Are you doing that with the intention of traffic control or?
I think it's both traffic control. And I think during the winter, it's fairly easy to see around the center, especially if you're a local. I think when the trees have their leaves, I think it's very difficult to see the signs. So, I think it's traffic control and especially for out-of-towners, pointing them in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Here's your story. Did you have a question?
I did, thank you. Thanks for being here and giving us your presentation. Going back to, say, one business would be displayed on 41st Avenue, does that include Lucky and Rite Aid since they already have that very big monument sign?
No, there would be, no tenant, Lucky or Rite Aid included, would have more than one sign on any frontage.
But the big one's supposed to come down.
Well, that's, yeah, I think that's up for discussion. That's one of the conditions that we're discussing here. And that's what I'm trying to get to is, in your lease arrangements with Lucky and Rite Aid, do you have any leverage to keep them off of these new signs until they remove the existing monument?
There's no issue with Rite Aid. It's an issue with Lucky, which is a very old lease. And we, I don't know if we have any leverage. I don't know if we'd have leverage per se. I don't think, the short answer is no, we don't have anything specific that says you can only have one sign in our lease. Those old leases don't contemplate situations like this, unfortunately.
But would you be required to add Lucky's?
We would not be required, absolutely not. So, the incentive to Lucky to, well, one of the incentives to get them to take down their existing sign before their lease expires with options in 2023 is to say, hey, consent to taking down your sign here, instead of just having one sign along 41st, now you're going to have visibility along Capitola and 38th Avenue.
Right.
So, that's our argument to that.
Okay, you have, so you would have that ability to?
We have a carrot, but not a stick to.
Yeah, I understand, okay. Sometimes the carrot can be, you know?
Hey, for Lucky, it'd be appropriate, so hopefully. Just to Commissioner Lesman's point and to address Ryan's presentation, our MSP didn't state one way or another whether we were going to take down the existing signs first because we don't have control over that. We are actively trying to get Lucky to agree to take it down, subject to the rest of this getting approved. But that's at their discretion. So, we will use our good faith to get them to take it down, in which case we'll replace it with a new sign. But what we're asking you is, please don't condition all the 41st signs on that happening because we don't have full control over it for six and a half years. So, what we're willing to do and what we will try and do is get them to agree to take it down earlier. But if not, we will take it down as soon as we have the power to do so contractually.
I have a, just on the signs on 38th, I noticed that the placement is, the rules and regulations sign is, the stop sign is there in front of it. And those all seem to create a lot of clutter, actually obscures some of the monument. Were those going to be reconfigured or placed so it makes, provides more visibility for the monument sign?
I think those are the general locations that we were thinking, but they could definitely be massaged a little bit. And that actually with the building department, that's a condition of approval, that sightlines and everything be acceptable. So, that's something we'd probably work on with them during the building permit process to adjust a little bit as necessary.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you. Those are the only questions I have for the applicant.
Any other questions? So, we're going to close the public hearing, which means we're going to close the public hearing. So, anybody, last chance. All right, public hearing's closed, commissioners. Anybody? There's a lot of moving parts here.
Right, I know. And I wasn't sure how you wanted to handle them.
So, can we sort of deal with the internal signs that are going to go on the businesses first and then talk about the monuments?
Leave the monuments and other issues for, okay, let's, anyone have a problem with that? Let's hear what people have to say about the internal signs.
I don't have any problem with the internal signs. I would go along with the staff's condition about on the corner buildings, the size of the signs. So, for me, as I said, I can leave, while I don't like them and I think they're outdated, they're already up there. So, you know, I think it would be ridiculous to ask them to change all of those signs. So, I can live with that if we include the staff condition regarding the size on the corner signs.
So, backing up just one layer from that, I guess the first question is, does the commission see a master sign program for this center as something that they want to approve in general? And I'm assuming there's no opposition.
I think that's what they're everywhere.
This is a good idea because it expedites new businesses and so forth. So, I think everyone supports that in general. Then we got the specifics on the internal signs. Anyone else?
I just have one comment. I, after it got dark today, I went and drove through. And there are some existing wall signs that are not, you know, fully rectangular cabinet signs. They're shaped, they're much less intrusive than some of the cabinet signs. And I would kind of like to see it evolve. So, you're not just replacing the, there's a couple that are just broad, white, you know?
That's a good point.
I would like to not see the ones that are currently shaped be replaced with signs that are, you know, rectangular and brighter. I think the ones that are there now look good and I wouldn't like to see them replaced. So, I don't know how you do that, but new wall signs, I would like to see them have some kind of an opaque background so that the letters are what stand out and not the whole sign. And if that's not a huge cost add, I would like to see that evolution take place.
I combined that. I'm okay with that.
So, we would add that as a condition as far as the wall signs are concerned, that the existing ones could stay. But as businesses replace the signs, then the new signs would have an opaque background. So, what shows up is the letters, not just the big white boxes, right? You guys can write that in appropriate words?
Can we, let's see if we have a consensus on that. We can somehow fold that into our conditions.
Yeah, we have consensus.
So, anything else in discussion on the internal signs before we move to the monument signs?
Are you including the directional signs as?
Let's.
Well, the directional signs, my comments are going to be about the design of the monument sign, which would also affect the designs of the.
That'll be a third topic, a third subject. And then we have others too. I mean, there's points, the conditions that were brought up by the applicant and so forth. So, okay, let's talk about the monument signs.
So, do we want to talk about number of signs first or do we want to talk about design of the monument signs? Okay. Well, since I'm talking, I'll just keep going. For me, I could absolutely go along with the staff recommendation of having the two monument signs on 41st Avenue, one on Capitola plus the theater sign, and one on 38th Avenue. That seems like, you know, an appropriate number of signs. What concerns me is that the design of the monument signs that they proposed to us with, you know, the panels all being different colors, different letters, different everything, to me, it just becomes a lot of clutter and confusion. And when the Capitola Mall came in and applied for their signs, I was, that was actually during the little bit of time I came back and worked for Capitola. And I thought they did a very nice job of sort of coordinating their signs. I think there is an example of them in the packet that we got. If I could find it where, you know, they use the same background and the same color of lettering for all of the tenants that were in there, which provides direction and you can easily see it. And, you know, I understand that Kings Plaza is, you know, sort of a different kind of shopping center and they do have a lot of smaller tenants in there. So, I was trying to think of how you could come up with a solution that would not be as expensive as the mall signs, but would remove a great deal of the clutter. And it seems to me if that, you know, all of the tenant signs had the same, had a matching background color. And then the lettering could all be one color or we could let them, you know, stylize the letter the way they wanted it. But if we go with this, you're never going to know how the sign's going to look, what tenant's going to come in with what color they want to put on. And for me, it creates a lot of clutter.
Anyone on the monument signs, either the number or the design?
Okay, either. Well, if I may, you know, I guess I went down there and looked at them and I looked at the prototypes that were set up there. And in my view, the numbers that they proposed, and now let's, accepting the one that's proposed in addition to the current Rite Aid, Lucky monument sign, I think that's too much. And I think, at least from that one. But with the other three, one starts at the very back end, the south end of the entrance, which is kind of far removed. I mean, it almost stands alone. So, you have two in the most, I think, trafficked driveway entrances into the Kings Plaza. And so, it would seem to me, and with the principle that each merchant would only be displayed once on 41st Avenue, I think it's important to try to accommodate having there, having that exposure on 41st Avenue. That's the most trafficked street. And so, I was, I'm willing to allow them to have three monument signs. And maybe with a condition that if Lucky and Rite Aid removed that big hideous one, then another one could go in there. So that all the merchants could have exposure on 41st Avenue. Because if we, it's what I hear, if you limit that, then it's going to be pick and choose. And then it's going to, who are going to be the losers? Who are going to be the winners? Is it going to be based on what you can afford? I don't know. Now, in terms of the design, you know, I don't think I know enough about, you know, what attracts people to be able to direct, how it should look. I mean, I get your point, Susan. I'm not, you know, when we look at the mall and the comparisons to the mall, I'm not sure if that's the best example that we want to have for what is the most appropriate and beneficial for the economic vitality of both the merchants in Kings Plaza and also for the city as a whole. And so, I don't, I don't just, I don't feel qualified to get into telling them how, you know, the design should be. The different colors, to me, to me, they do more pop when they are different colors. And you see, people tend to see, oh, because Orchard is green. And then they see and they go to that.
It's also their logos too.
And, well, and the logos are there too. And so, those combinations create the branding, which I imagine would be attractive as a wear to, where on the other hand, if they're all the same, I have a sense that maybe as people are driving by, they don't attract as much attention. So, on those, so on those two questions, you know, I'm, would be agreeable to having three. The sizes are within our guidelines and maybe possibly a fourth, but that would be conditioned upon the other one coming down. So, and I mean, I, and also looking at the end caps of these, those seem to be just blank and pretty boring. Maybe, I don't want to add this as a condition, but maybe asking the Als to work with our Arts Commission to, you know, maybe put something interesting up there and attractive and maybe that can be a future joint project. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad you're here, Sam, because I always feel like the one man out on the sign issue. The sign issue is a big issue in Capitola, let me tell you. We spent over three hours in our zoning update on this whole thing. So, I get it's an issue for people. I also feel like we need to make our business be able to survive out there. So, I'm glad you talk about the color thing. I, you know, when you think of Orchard Supply, it sounds as green. When you think about O'Reilly's, you see that logo on that sign there. Rite Aid, no matter where you go in California, just about Rite Aid's going to be the red and white color. So, for me, I like to try to make it accessible and successful for our folks. I've worked in communities that were this upper end where every sign looked basically the same. They had little nice lights on them, but you couldn't tell one business from another business when you drove by. This, you can drive by with a quick glance and understand what businesses are there. So, I would support leaving it the way it is. I don't have an issue with that. As far as numbers, I don't really even have an issue with the numbers. To me, I only see, really, to me, it's more of a logistical issue for me. The one sign on Capitola Road down towards the bank down there, that's really a one-way. So, to me, it just seems like by putting a sign there, you may create where people are trying to pull in to that area. But you can pull in and get to a couple of spots there if it's open, I guess. And then the one that I think, Sam, you were talking down by O'Reilly's, you know, where the trucks, the trucks come out, I don't think my light, well, it doesn't work with it. The trucks will come out of, yeah, right there, that's it. That one is also kind of a, I don't want to say it's really a one-way, but typically it seems to me the use of that. So, but I'm okay with trying to make it successful for our folks, but I also appreciate that we don't want to make it like too much clutter. So, I kind of, I'm kind of, I could go with the program the way it is.
I kind of agree with the multi-colors adding to the clutter. I also don't know marketing and that well enough to design and define it. What I would prefer to see would be like the name of the business in a color as opposed to a big background. So, you'd have Rite Aid in red and Lucky in red or something like that. But I'd be willing to go with it the way it is if the backgrounds were opaque at night. So, at night, you're not getting blasted with this multi-colored distraction. If the backgrounds were opaque, you'd see the letters, you'd still get the same feeling. So, I would, I would look at one of those two solutions to try and minimize some of the, of the clutter of them. As far as the quantity of signs, I was really surprised when I saw how small they are. And if you're going to get all those tenants listed out there on a sign, you're going to have to have that many signs if they're going to be that size. It's a trade-off in my mind. But the one that's way back there, as an example, if the East End Gastropub is on that one, and that's the only place that it gets to be listed, then at least all those people that are heading by are going to know they missed it. And they're going to be able to go back. Because they can't see that from 41st Avenue really at all, except in the wintertime because of all the trees and stuff. So, I don't have a super big problem with the quantity of signs. I share TJ's concern about the location of the one. I share TJ's concern about the location of the one on Capitola Road being at an entrance where you can't enter. And I don't know if you could shift the exact location of that far enough, the way that you're not going to have, there are too many people coming in the wrong way there that nearly cause accidents that I've seen. The two on 38th Avenue, when I went over there, I, I see them as being appropriate as long as they're not bright signs. Because if you put only one of them, it's going to be at one entrance or the other. The two entrances kind of made sense to me. So I guess I'm a hybrid.
Yeah, I don't think we have any obvious direction yet. So this is big, this is a big issue. And it's a tough one. And I really appreciate the amount of effort that's gone into this. The idea of a master sign program there is obviously a great idea and needs to be done. And the devil is in the details here. I want to mention that we've gotten quite a few letters to the planning commissioners from tenants, and I think they're mostly all tenants. So those are part of the record also, and we appreciate that. There's a lot of little issues that we'll get to, I guess, as we keep moving forward on this. When I think about this, one of the factors in my mind is, is that this size shopping center, which is not a regional shopping center, but it's not a strip center, it's kind of a mid-sized shopping center. Of course, we see them all over the place, it's very common. It doesn't seem to be the standard for this, the custom and practice to have every tenant listed on the main street. I mean, usually, two or three or four anchor tenants negotiate the rights to be on the main street, and then the smaller stores don't have signage out on the main street. So this would be a little bit unusual, I think, in, in that regard, to have all 21 tenants have that exposure. In fact, I'm not even sure that it's productive, because there comes a point where, I mean, it's like, if you put a big directory sign out on 41st Avenue, I mean, how's, how's that going to help someone driving by? There's just too much information. And maybe that's why most centers only have a few major signs. And then the people, those, those anchor tenants draw the people who then find the other stores. But obviously, that's, the, the tenants themselves don't feel that way. They want to be out there on 41st, every single one of them, and probably they want to be on the top two if they can. But, you know, I, I'm, somehow it just doesn't seem to me to be the, the right direction to go, to fill 41st Avenue up with 21 store signs telling us every single store that's in Kings Plaza Shopping Center as you drive down 41st. But I don't, we have some conditions to talk about. One that's not been talked about at all that I, I just want to raise is, part of the sign program provides that a tenant who is in violation has two days to come into compliance. And one of the problems with that center that we've had in the past are these sandwich board signs out on the sidewalk. And we certainly don't want those kinds of violations to not be cured immediately. So this is chapter two, section two. I would like to see some change to that to make sure that we get more immediate compliance with violations, at least that kind of violation. So anyone have any suggestions as to where we go with this?
Well, I, ooh. I think we had a little bit of some consensus. There may be a little differences, but maybe we can start working there. As far as numbers of signs, is there someone who's adamantly against the number of sign that they're proposing? Susan?
Well, I would, you know, I'm leaning in the direction of the staff recommendation, but I can be persuaded.
Yeah, I just think, and, okay, well, I'm going to, I think.
I'll, I'll give you a little compromise for me, so.
Okay, I, I hate to, so my experience, when I talk about these signs, they're really hard to tell, it comes from my past career as a firefighter, is being able to locate a business when you need to locate it. And so, you know, hopefully, we work in areas that we know all of our business, but sometimes that's not the case, and, and I would hope our central firefighters would know how to get to all these businesses. But sometimes that's not the case, because not everyone can live in Santa Cruz on the wages. So, so finding these, I think the logo, the, having the marquees with the names and the logos is, is really kind of a significant thing, aside from the, because I'm all for trying to help our businesses. And I think the thing, when I, when I first went to look at these, I was going, is this, are they seriously, they're going to be this small, the signs? Because I was a little taken back by how small they were. So more small signs versus the bigger signs, which would produce a lot more illumination, I think, in the evenings. The size of these signs, I really don't know that they're going to cause anybody any difficulty other than help them to find the business they need to find. That's, that's why, by the way, the Owls, you guys, you guys are really polished at these presentations. I got to give you some kudos there. That was a, I mean, you guys had that lined up, one after another, so you pretty much took away a, a lot of the questions I had, but, and concerns. But for me, I think the number of signs and the size are not significant, it's going to cause anybody any heartburn in, in Capitola. That's my own personal view.
Well, obviously, obviously, I, I disagree. I think that, you know, having the four signs lined up on 41st Avenue and having each sign have six tenants listed on it, all different colors, all different, is, is going to create a lot of, I, I don't know what the right word is, but, but confusion almost, because there's going to be so many signs and, you know, people are trying to read them, trying to figure out, well, do I turn in this driveway for this one? Do I turn in that drive for that? So I, I think that just having, you know, a lot of signs with sort of tenant directories out there is not the best approach. I think that, you know, and as, as I said, for me, the design of the sign, I, I find them very cluttered and, I think, difficult for, for people to read when you're quickly driving down the street trying to figure out where you're going. For the number of signs, I think the staff had recommended having two signs along 41st Avenue, which worked for me. And they had one on Capitola Road. And for me, since the signs are slightly smaller and lower on 38th Avenue, you know, I could live with the two signs on 38th Avenue. And I think that's going to become important in the future, because that is, you know, one of the streets that we talk about having redeveloped in our general plan, and the mall goes forward and all that. So that, that will be significant. And there are two sort of distinct driveways there which are fairly far apart. But for the design of the sign itself, the, the way they're proposed right now, you know, I couldn't go for that, but I'm only one vote, and other people may want to do it.
Can I ask staff to put up the location of their recommendation again? Because.
Two on 41st.
So what you're saying is that their recommendation with an additional sign on 38th is maybe like to see.
Yeah, I don't think the 38th sign is really what they're that interested in. So when other people speak, I'd like to hear what people think about how this will affect other shopping centers and other applicants down the road. When everyone sees these, let's say, four monument signs going up at Kings Plaza, and they, their tenants want to be, want to have 41st Avenue exposure, are we going to have every business on 41st listed right off the road?
Let me just go down the line.
Well, I mean, yeah, to maybe address that, I, I, I fully expect, you know, you know, we, we have talked for many, many years about what are we going to do about that 41st Avenue corridor, especially when we went through the recession? And, and how do we provide, and particularly with attention upon the Capitola Mall area? So I fully expect that they're going to come through with some new concepts, some new ideas, and those are, and what I get is that we have the experts coming to us, the actual business owners, the people who are in that business, and saying, this is what we need to do to vitalize and to maintain the economic engine for Capitola. And, and I fully, yes, I understand that, yeah, this may be applied at other locations, and particularly at the Capitola Mall. And I think that we should listen and, and be flexible, because we have mutual interest here that we're trying to serve. So to answer that, I mean, yeah, I think that that will happen, and I think that we, that will be a part of the discussion, because I think that shopping has become more experiential. People, because people can buy the stuff online, you know, they really can. And so, but it's maybe when the immediacy of what the, the merchants offer is what will attract people to, to go out, and also just the experience of being out. And sometimes I think, you know, maybe, you know, the bright letters and the, and the colors, that can be kind of attractive to folks, as, as well as informative. So that, that was my sense about maybe, yeah, where is this going to go in that area? And since this is all, this is all commercial, okay. And probably if they had any concerns, there's just maybe a little bit more residential on the 38th side, but those are modest and a couple of there. But this is all commercial corridor here. And I, and I want to maybe work with the merchants to help support them, because I think that that is a part of our function here as well. It seems that we have the discretion to do that, we can make the findings to do that. And in terms of the numbers on 41st Avenue, I mean, I was, I mean, and because of the issue about the current large, and what I would consider hideous, but, you know, maybe in its time it wasn't, but that huge Rite Aid Lucky sign, okay, I would, I think we should not approve a new monument sign there, because it, it, both of them, they're right there on top of one another. I think that truly does create clutter. And it should be one or the other. So maybe, I mean, I would like to approve three on 41st Avenue, and, and having that, the, the one at the, I assume that that's the north point, be conditioned upon removal. I don't think any of these are, this whole project should not be conditioned upon removal of the Rite Aid Lucky sign. But, but for just that one. So those are, those are my thoughts about the numbers and, of monument signs.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to clear up some confusion on the added condition that was suggested for removal of the sign that Commissioner Story just talked about, it's my understanding that that was a request of the applicant. Staff doesn't have any strong feelings about that, and perhaps we misunderstood the request, but.
Yeah, and I think in one of the first letters we got, they said that sign was going to be removed. So I think that's where we got that issue.
So somehow I just, I almost think this is a city council. This is a big enough issue that really belongs in front of the city council, because I really think this is going to have a big impact on the future of applications on 41st and the desire of all tenants on 41st to be, have signage on the road.
Yeah, you know, Chairman, I, I kind of agree with you, but I also want to see our business do well. And I, and in light of talking about the Capitola, Capitola Mall, I would like to see Kings Plaza be able to be competitive when we get this new, whatever we're going to get there. And, and if, you know, if we have, I mean, that's why we have it zoned the way it's zoned, is because it is a commercial, I don't think it's anything that's gaslighting, you know, I don't, it's not something that people are going to say this is, you know, way out of character for a commercial there in the shopping center, in my, in my mind. I mean, if we had to give one up, I mean, selfishly, the one you're talking about where the Lucky Rite Aid sign is now, the, the big one there behind the Shell station, that, to me, I'm selfishly, I hate everyone knowing to go in there because, but that is the main thoroughfare, because it backs up to that, soon as you come and you make that left turn off of Capitola onto 41st there, everybody that's a local is going to dive in behind the Shell station to get to Orchard or, or to the pet store in the back. And so, but I'd like to see us give these folks the opportunity to, to do well there. I don't know.
I would almost like to see it continued to have them bring back a, a sign design that addresses the, the quantity of signs, and maybe they have one sign on Capitola Road that's bigger than the one they're proposing, but limits it to one instead of two. And on 41st Avenue, I don't have any issue at all with approving the three and the fourth one upon removal of the one, existing one. But again, I'd really like to see the opaque backgrounds. I'm not one to, to boot it up to city council. We have a process, the planning commission is kind of here to, to be that first pass, and I think that we have a duty to give them an opinion. And it can always be appealed by the applicant, or by a member of the public, or by a city council member to go to council. And I agree with you that they're probably going to wind up seeing it, because it's, it is a big issue. But I agree with what TJ and Sam are both saying about the, the retail community is a lifeblood for Capitola, and we need to help them. And the other thing I just want to point out is, we require a lot of landscaping, we require a lot of trees. And I travel a lot, I use my GPS and my Yelp and stuff to find locations, but when I'm driving down the street looking for that place, if there's not a sign with invisibility, if I can't see the monument sign or the, the wall sign that's on the business, you know, you miss, you miss locations, and you might wind up going someplace else because you couldn't find that one. So I think you've got to have some signs.
No, I, I agree we don't have the right to advocate responsibility to the city council. I'm just saying that I think it's a big enough issue that it would be nice if they had a final say on it, maybe they will. So we haven't even addressed some of the conditions of approval that the applicant has objected to. One of them was landscaping around some of the signs. They wanted to be relieved of that responsibility.
And I don't have any issues with that myself.
Yeah, you know, it seemed like most of, there's current landscaping around most of these. The other ones set on little patches of lawn, and, you know, maybe, I mean, I assume that this is going to go in where the lawns are, and the lawn will be up to the brick or just right up to it. And so, so I don't, I mean, where there is landscaping, I'd like to see it be maintained as it is. And where there's lawn, I assume they can keep it lawn, or, but if we have a drought again, they may want to consider themselves maybe transitioning that to less water-intensive use there, so.
The condition simply requires them to submit a landscape plan, because we don't, we don't know what's going to happen at each one of those sites. Are they going to go on lawn, or what's going to happen? And, you know, the condition isn't requiring them to do a whole lot of new landscaping, it's just saying, you know, they need to submit a plan to staff about, is it going to be grass? Is it going to be rock? Is it going to be bark? What is it going to be? And so, so I, I think, you know.
Not a problem.
It's not a problem for them to do that. I think we require everyone else to do it. I don't, I don't see, I don't see that one as being a big issue.
We could even clarify it by just saying that, you know, bark or that kind of thing would be permitted? No?
Yeah, I think you could let this, you know, the, the staff do that, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any of the other, I'm sorry, but it just doesn't work to have an ongoing back and forth.
You know, we.
Oh, okay. See, they say you have the wrong condition.
No, it's a irrigated landscape. If it doesn't provide for rootage, so it's a 38th, it must use drought tolerant.
You can use drought tolerant plants. And if, you know, the way I read this, if there's going to. And if, you know, the way I read this, if there's going to be irrigation, it has to be on a timer, doesn't say they have to be irrigated.
Maybe staff could just clarify that.
Given the issues we're grappling with here, that seems like small potatoes.
I agree.
So how would the commissioners like to proceed? Anyone, I guess we're looking at a motion to approve a master sign program under certain conditions. And we may want to deal either in the motion with those conditions or separately.
So on condition number eight, I'm, I'm kind of in the mindset with Commissioner Smith that we, we look at having an opaque background at night so that it's not too bright. And on condition number, I think we talked about the interior ones, right, already? So we've, we've got that. And number 10, condition number 10, go ahead with the two along Capitola Ave, along with the theater sign, three on 41st and four when the Lucky sign comes down, and then the two smaller signs on 38th. What do you, what are your thoughts on?
Is this a motion you're putting together here or?
We could start that direction. I'm all game to get on with this and.
Yeah.
Make it end it. And then I, the, I agree with it, as long as there's a clear understanding, it sounds like staff's on board, that the landscaping is drought tolerant and they have that flexibility.
And design of the monument signs per the application?
I don't, yeah, I don't have an issue with the design myself.
So that's your motion, do we?
Is that enough for you guys to understand a motion?
Can we read that clarification?
Yes.
So condition of approval number six was also one of the items that the applicants wanted removed.
And I would express concern with an open-ended allowance for staff to give them, you know, I would want to know what size can they get with an administrative approval before going to planning commission? So if there's a desire to allow them to have 85 feet, we could change that, but I, I would encourage not to have an open-ended.
Yeah, this is the, one of the interior signs that we discussed, right, on the?
Right, I don't have any difficulty with the 75 square feet.
Yeah, I can live with that.
I don't think we've discussed the directional signs, does anyone have any input on that?
I don't have an issue with the directional.
Yeah, no, those are fine, yeah. With TJ, if that was a motion, then?
We'll make it a motion, take and see what happens.
I think we were at the point of finding out if the staff got the motion down in some coherent fashion.
Could you try to repeat it for us, please?
I can definitely try. I knew you were going to say that.
The answer is no.
Really, the only, the only two that I was really addressing, we talked about the internal sign, so we're going to, and then we talked six, I guess we're going to keep it 75. Eight is, we talked about making them opaque so at nighttime that, you know, they weren't shining too brightly. And then number 10 would be three on 41st Avenue, four when the Lucky sign goes away, two along Capitola, and then the two smaller signs on 38th.
Would you agree to include that chapter two of their proposed sign program, paragraph two, that tenants be required to remove non-conforming signs immediately rather than two days?
Yeah, I think immediately's, I mean, that's, that's an enforcement thing, so that makes it kind of difficult, but.
Could I jump in for one more clarification?
Sure, Ryan.
So the two monument signs on Capitola Avenue, are you saying, or Capitola Road, you're saying two and the existing theater sign?
And the theater sign.
Okay.
Yeah, I could, I'm flexible on that, but.
So you're saying pretty much as requested by the applicant, except that the fourth one on 41st only goes in when the big one comes down?
Got it.
Okay. Okay, so that looks like a motion to me.
Can I do a friendly amendment before you do?
Let's get a second first.
And I'll second it first.
Okay.
Okay, now friendly amendment, that the, the wall signs also have the opaque background? Okay, does that need to be included as a condition or no?
It's written in the sign right there.
Ah, okay. And on condition number 11, it says no tenant sign may be located on more than one monument sign per frontage.
Twelve per frontage, yeah.
Okay, so we have a few proposed changes acceptable to the moving party, acceptable to the seconding party? Yes, yes. Okay, any further discussion? We're going to do a roll call on this one.
Commissioner Story?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Welsh?
Aye.
Chairperson Newman?
No.
So that passes three to two. And appreciate all the work that everyone, staff and applicant put in on this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I lost my agenda in all the flurry of activity here.
Bromer's is great.
The color helps.
Okay, that's going to take us to a public hearing 5C, which is 4025 Bromer Street. Design permit and conditional use permit to develop a new three-story mixed-use building. Okay, staff report, who went on Bromer Street?
Before you is an application for a design permit and conditional use permit to construct a three-story mixed-use building at 4025 Bromer Street. The proposal includes variance requests for minimum floor height and parking dimension standards. The subject property is located in a transitional area of the CC Community Commercial Zoning District, which has a mix of commercial, visitor-serving, and residential uses in close proximity. East of the subject property is 41st Avenue, which has high-intensity commercial development. Heading west along 41st Avenue, Bromer Street transitions from commercial into less intensive residential development. The neighboring properties to the north are single-story and to the south is a four-story hotel and two-story residences. So here you can see a close-up of the existing property. The existing single-story office building would be demolished as a part of this proposal. And here's an image showing the front of the existing building today. On November 3rd of 2016, the planning commission reviewed a conceptual design of a three-story development and provided the applicant with feedback. Following the hearing, the applicant revised the proposal per the planning commission direction and resubmitted the plans. The applicant lowered the building height by six feet. They shifted the building four feet towards Bromer Street to utilize some of the right-of-way for the front landscaping requirement. They added landscaping around the rear parking area. They enlarged the drive aisle at the rear parking lot to 25 feet to improve vehicular circulation, and they reduced residential window area for added neighborhood privacy. Here's the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to locate the new three-story building in the front half of the lot with the required parking behind. The second story of the building showed in this gray outline extends over three of the parking spaces. The proposed building would have a 10-foot front yard setback and 43-foot rear yard setback. Building would be setback two feet from the east and 14 feet from the west property line. So the applicant is proposing new landscaping throughout the property, and that's shown in yellow. The code requires a 15-foot landscape strip along the front of the property. The proposed front landscape area would utilize the front 10 feet of the property along with five feet of the road right-of-way. The code does not specifically require that the 15-foot landscape strip be located entirely within property boundaries, and the planning commission approved of this concept at the November 3rd, 2016 conceptual review hearing. Additionally, at the hearing, the planning commission asked the public works director to review the proposed vehicular circulation. The director requested that 18 feet of the proposed west-side yard landscaping strip at the back end of the building, shown in red, be removed and used for vehicular turnout. Outgoing vehicles would yield to the incoming and utilize this turnout area to allow the incoming vehicles to pass, and appropriate signage would be installed facing the parking lot. Staff has added this as condition of approval number 12. This slide shows the first floor plan, which consists of 850 square feet of office space. The dashed lines highlight the side property lines. The residential units above the office building would be accessed from the rear parking area, shown in the blue arrow. Here's a second-story floor plan. The second and third floors would consist of two identical two-story units. Each unit would have a second-story deck located on either the front or the rear of the property. The second-story deck at the rear has a potential to create some privacy concerns with the neighboring single-story residences on either side. The applicant has worked out an agreement with each neighboring property owner to plant vegetation and add screening to address these privacy concerns. So here's a third-story plan. Third story would step in three feet on all sides to increase the setbacks and decrease the overall massing. Here are the proposed elevations with the front on the top right. The applicant was directed by the planning commission to reduce the height of the building during the conceptual review. The design was reduced from 40 to 34 feet through decreasing individual floor heights of the individual stories. First story would be 11 and a half, second story would be 10 feet, and the third would be eight and a half. So here's a 3D massing of the proposal to give you a little bit better of an idea of what it will look like. The building would use a mix of dark gray stucco and stone siding for the first floor with white vertical board and battened siding for the second story and dark gray horizontal siding along the third floor and second floor deck railings. The finished roof would be shingled. The front of the building would have a covered entryway over the front door with large windows on either side, and that front entryway is solely used for the office building. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a reduced first-story ceiling height. The municipal code requires that first-floor ceiling heights for mixed-use developments be a minimum of 15 feet in height, while the applicant's proposing 11 and a half. Planning commission endorsed this height reduction at the November 3rd conceptual review hearing. The commission noted that the subject property is much smaller than most CC zone properties in the vicinity and thus should be designed accordingly. The reduced first-floor height reduces the overall height and massing of the proposal to better fit with the neighboring single-story residences. The applicant's also proposing, also requesting consideration of a variance option for reduced parking dimension standards. The code requires that covered parking spaces for residences be a minimum of nine by 18 feet. The applicant has proposed an alternative parking plan, which is shown on this slide, which proposes to reduce one of the covered parking spaces to eight feet by 18 feet, shown in blue. The proposal would provide one additional parking space for a total of eight. So both options would contain the seven standard-size parking spaces compliant with the code requirements, but this option shown on this slide would contain or would include an additional substandard parking space. Although the proposal would create more onsite parking, staff cannot make findings for variance. There are no special circumstances associated with the property that prevent the applicant from meeting the onsite parking standards. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the original parking proposal with the seven full-size onsite parking spaces. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the application for demolition and construction of a new three-story mixed-use development at 4025 or 4525 Bromer Street with the approval of a variance for minimum floor height and based on the findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Questions of staff? I see we're all kind of starting to fade here.
No.
Hearing none? We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jason Woolley. I'm an architect on this project, working for Rob Stewart, the owner. And I appreciate the, all the commentary we've gotten and input we've gotten from the commissioners and also from staff and the community because I, we do feel like the project has actually improved significantly and it's been a pleasure working with everyone. We've been pretty diligent about working to accommodate the neighbor concerns along with agency regulations. It's a small lot and it's been a little bit of a struggle to get it all to fit with landscaping and parking and making sure the parking's in the rear of the building and also trying to achieve our programmatic needs. So, but we feel like it's, it's turned into quite the successful project. We feel like we've addressed the concerns of the neighbors and planners and staff and had various meetings with staff, obviously a conceptual meeting with the commissioners, and we've even met with the community and negotiated agreements with them to alleviate some of their concerns. This property owner is a longtime local resident. He grew up in this neighborhood and has run a small construction and development company here for the last 36 years. So he actually intends to use this lower-level office space as his personal office, and at this point, they only have one employee, so he really feels like the impact, you know, on the neighborhood is going to be pretty insignificant. And on top of that, it sounds like maybe his daughter might lease one of the apartments, so maybe it'll be a true family affair, you know, at this, at this property. We're actually quite excited that staff has put together quite a good, a good case for the overall approval of this project, and we hope that you agree. And there's just those two items that we're asking for your approval on, one being lowering that ground floor office height from the 15 down to 11 and a half. Definitely this will, we agree that this helps with the massing becoming significantly less and alleviates some of the concerns of the neighbors. And we appreciate that suggestion from staff, actually, to alleviate some of those, some of the anxiety with that height of that building. The second one is asking for approval that this one required, or that one of the covered, required covered parking spaces be a compact space. This means that that space would be one foot skinnier than a standard space. It actually, strangely enough, just to make a long story short, it just doesn't really work to have the accessible space be underneath that covered area and to fit, if we have to put all full-size spaces in underneath that covered area. So we, we definitely would, you know, we, we think it's preferable to have that, because it's such a small lot and try to squeeze everything in, it's preferable to have that accessible space underneath the covered area as opposed to at the rear property line with a longer path all the way to that back entry door. And we just couldn't figure out a way to keep that there. So is that one? Okay, so yeah. And by having that, one of those required covered spaces be compact, the one shown in blue, it does allow us to actually have that accessible parking right there at the back of the building, which is where the back entrance is, right at the end of that accessible striped area. And that entire area is actually covered by building, by one of the apartments at the back. So, you know, we feel like this is definitely something that would serve the city of Capitola well by having this extra parking space. It's a concern that the neighbors did bring up, parking in this, in this area, and it's a busy intersection, you know, close to 41st there. And so we feel like it would be a benefit to Capitola and it would serve the city of Capitola well and alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors by having this one additional space and also having the convenience of having that accessible space closer to the building and not at the rear property line. So thank you for your consideration and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, did you sign up?
No, but I'll do that.
Any questions?
So I have one question. Do you intend to mark that compact space really big and bold that it is a compact space, so full-size vehicles won't?
We can do that, sure, yeah, absolutely.
So I have a question on that subject, too. Would it be possible to switch the eight-foot space and the nine-foot space?
Like literally mirror those two? Yeah, it would.
Does the, I don't want to encroach on the accessible parking space legally, but as a practical matter.
Your door could open and get, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can open your door on it and.
Well, keep in mind that that striped area is actually no parking. That's actually the loading area for the doors. So a van is really what that is sized for, so they can actually pull in and the doors to the van open to a seven-foot wide area.
Yeah, I understand how that works, they're all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
What I'm saying is, is that most of the time, you can fit the car, eight feet is pretty narrow.
Sure.
But you can fit your car in, but getting out of your. But you can fit your car in, but getting out of your car is sometimes a little difficult if you have that handicapped area, which is only being used for someone to get out of their vehicle every once in a while.
Sure. A little more flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little more room.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Public hearing, anyone else?
My name is Ken Gamble, and I have just a couple of points. We, we're not in agreement on having a three-story building in that, that area. We, we feel that the variances are not to the benefit of the neighborhood, but it's to the benefit of the, of the builder, of the owner. We feel that the size block, does block some lighting and the airflow to some of the neighbors. And we, we have a fourplex behind the, the building, and we have a line of sight issue from their third-story into our, our place. I also believe that Braemer's already under severe traffic stress, and that is a one-way at that point where they have a, I mean, you can't get out and turn left. There is no street parking at all on Braemer. You have to park in the neighbors' areas if, if they need to overflow their parking needs. And the landscaping plan, there, it looks like from, that they're going to be planting mulberry trees along the side there, and they have a aggressive rooting system of these trees, and we have a drainage pipe right behind their, their back fence there, going all along the, that area there, and we're worried about the aggressiveness of the root system on that, the piping in that area. So we would like to see another type of growth there, maybe Italian cypress or something that are tall and, and not so wide root structure on it. Anyway, so that, that's my concerns.
Thank you.
My name's Rob Stewart. I'm the owner. We purchased this property a little over, mid-season last year. I'm a local builder and developer, owner of Timberworks. We're primarily commercial building contractors, but we develop real estate as well. My intent for this office is going to be low-impact. I have one office gal. All my guys are out in the field. We currently run about thirty-five carpenters, but we were not intent, my guys never come to the office. It's a place for me to do planned takeoffs, accounting for our business, and it's me and one office gal. And I've been in business since nineteen eighty-two in Santa Cruz. I grew up in Live Oak. I love this community. I feel like Jason has worked diligently with staff. I'd like to acknowledge Katie and Ryan for working with us on a few variations, but I, the one point I just want to talk to is I worked diligently with the neighbors. We listened to neighborhood concerns, tried to address and mitigate measures to, with our expense, where I'm doing landscaping and privacy fencing, privacy on the end of the decks, privacy walls. So I really worked and listened to the neighbors. The one issue that did come up at the initial planning commission meeting was parking was a struggle on that street. And so I'm respectfully urging you, if you could consider our plans with the eight spaces, and I'm more than willing to flip-flop those spaces, and I'm willing to work with the neighbor behind me, who I just met for the first time, maybe on a different tree selection, as long as it meets city of Capitola landscape design. I, I have a local landscape architect, Greg Lewis. One of the reasons for that selection was privy, providing some privacy to the neighbor to the west of us, so I would probably have to get some input from both neighbors on something that would work. But I'm willing to work with staff on that, if that could help appease his concern on root system. But thank you.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, anyone?
Well, I think they did a really nice job incorporating all the comments that were made when they came to the planning commission before, as far as the conceptual review. And my recollection is that that hearing, we also had some concerns about the three-story as it had been proposed, because it was so tall. And I think with the changes they've made in the heights with each level, you've brought the structure down to, you know, what is a reasonable size and, you know, is compatible for, for that area. So I think they've done a, a nice job on addressing what was one of our major concerns before. And for me, you know, parking is probably going to be an issue, so if they could do what Chairperson Newman suggested of sort of flip-flopping those parking places, it seems like the one smaller parking place would work and function and provide an additional parking space to help alleviate parking for the neighborhood. I haven't quite figured out how, what findings we're going to make to make that happen, but we'll work on those. So, you know, overall, I'm, I'm quite pleased with the ultimate design and how they responded to the concerns that we expressed when they came before us last time.
Yeah, I would totally agree that it looks like they've, they listened to our concerns and the neighbors' concerns, have taken that into consideration, and I think it's a good-looking building. This is one of those nights, it's kind of a, it's kind of an odd night, you know, so this community commercial, this is new in this area, but at some point, I imagine the residents will all, at some point, come back with something like this, those single-family dwellings. So I think it meets the, our concerns that we asked prior, and, and, yeah, I'm totally on board with it.
I'm going to say ditto to all of that without repeating it. The one thing I, I would add is the, the option with the variance on parking, for me, makes more sense because the flow into that entrance, so you've got, instead of having an entrance that's now bumping up against the bumper of a car, you have that open space, so a handicap person is going to be able to, to utilize that back door much better.
Well, it sounds like this project had a lot of history that predated me, and, and they, looks like they've worked hard to try to accommodate the planning commission's request. The only two variances, one concerning the first-floor height, I mean, that's a function of the, of the request from the planning commission to bring it down, so I think that I would certainly support that. On the parking, more parking is always better than less. Seems like compact spaces are pretty standard in many locations. And, but I think Chairperson, you made a good recommendation, so I support that. I would, I would like to see maybe the applicant work with the neighbor on the concerns about the mulberries and those trees, and see if we could substitute those out, so for something that would be more acceptable to Mr. Gamble. So with that...
I just want to be real quick here, is that, this is really a good paradigm for the process that we went through here of having a conceptual, and they came back with a beautiful result. And I don't usually inject my personal tastes here, but I really like this building. So nice job. I mean, I, I think it's going to set a good standard for this type of small, mixed-use commercial building. It's, you know, this is going to be a real plus, so...
So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the application with the swapping of the eight-foot space to the nine-foot space, and a condition that the applicant work with staff and the neighbor to come up with an acceptable landscaping plan that includes trees.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Well, you waited a long time, but you, it was worth it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, last item on the public hearings is the zoning code update. And staff report. We still have any gas in the tank here?
Right.
Okay.
This is the last one, right?
What could be more exciting, right?
It's our last issue, right? No?
Okay. Shall I proceed? So during our last hearing on the zoning code update, there was one item that we, we're going to bring back to you with more information on the state regulations. So, under the remaining zoning code issues, the last remaining item was the accessory dwelling units, and that'll be the focus of our conversation this evening. There will be a couple slides I'll stop on to get some guidance from you on how you'd like to proceed. So just as an overview, accessory dwelling units are the, previously called secondary dwelling units, and so the update refers to them as accessory dwelling units. And the purpose of accessory dwelling units is to provide more affordable housing, and the, within the state legislation, there's been a big push in recent legislation, and that is what we're reflecting here, is how the new legislation is being implemented into our zoning code. So other changes is that there are new categories to the ADUs. One is an attached accessory dwelling unit, and that is a unit that is attached to a single wall or more within the building. Second is a detached access, accessory dwelling unit, which the name explains itself. Third is internal accessory dwelling units. An internal accessory dwelling unit is wholly within the existing building and/or buildings on site. So if you have an exist, existing accessory structure, you, an internal accessory dwelling unit that's placed in that structure is also classified as a internal accessory dwelling unit. And it's important, that third internal accessory dwelling unit, you're utilizing structures that already exist on space, but there are some waivers that came within the new legislation for parking and, and connections to utilities. So those terms are important when we break down what the code allows. So for parking requirements, the internal ADU, you're not required, you're, by state law, we're not allowed to require parking for any internal ADU beyond what is required for the primary residence. And that's how our code currently has acted, is that whatever the total square footage of the home is, that's how we require the parking. For an attached and a detached ADU within the zoning code update, we, there was direction from the planning commission to add, to require one space. Under the state regulations, you're allowed to include, require up to one space for these units. And then this can be waived with, for certain circumstances. One is if it's within a quarter-mile of bus service that runs every fifteen minutes during peak. That doesn't exist in Capitola at this time. If it's located in a historic district, so that could impact within the, along Riverview, I think it's the one area that it could impact. Permits are required, but not offered. Within Capitola, permits are always offered when you don't have onsite parking, so that wouldn't be impacted. And then if there's a car share, pickup or drop-off within the block. So that doesn't exist right now, but could in the future. Off-street parking, there's now a requirement by the state to allow tandem on an, on an existing driveway or within the setbacks, so that's clear within the zoning code or update. Next, for the internal ADUs, as I was saying, there's special regulations for the internal ADUs, and this is for the utility connections. This prohibits local agencies, being the city or the county, from requiring new utility connections for the internal ADUs. And just to note that that's not applicable to the SoCal Water District, because that is not a public local agency, so. Next, but, but it would, within the Santa Cruz Water District, that would apply.
Can I inject here, I mean, are we, is the idea that people are actually going to come in and apply for internal ADUs? I mean, like that...
Administratively.
...still exist all over the place now? I mean...
Yeah, we, we've had them in the past, where somebody will convert a bedroom and maybe give a kitchenette next to it and share a bathroom. So there's at least a couple in town.
The park is a treasure. She had an internal one.
Well, they're, yeah, I mean, they're, they're being done, and probably most people don't even think they're illegal. There are people living in other houses all over the, I mean, I did it back when I went to school. I, I mean, that's, I rented a room in somebody's house.
Rented a room or having an ADU?
It's having the additional kitchen.
Oh, it's the kitchen.
It's the kitchen that triggers it.
Kitchen that triggers it.
Yeah. So it'd have sleeping and kitchen facilities.
I get it.
And bath. So for attached and detached ADUs, the utility connections, a local agency may require the new, a new or separate utility connection. That connection fee has to be based on, it has to be proportionate to the burden of the ADU, so that's how the Water District will go in and look at how many faucets or showers or bathrooms, and they'll calculate it appropriately.
Or then appropriately.
And then, within the utility connections, also fire sprinklers. It prohibits the requirement of fire sprinklers if they're not required for the primary structure. We actually have a question into the state regarding what about, if it didn't, you know, if it's a new unit that the original home wasn't required to have fire sprinklers but is required today. So we'll find out the answer to that and make sure it's clear in the code, so. Another addition is that ADUs are allowed on lots with a single-family, in the single-family district or multifamily zones, but it's limited to a lot that has a single, single-family home on it. So in the multifamily, if there's already multifamilies on, if there's multiple units, you would not be allowed to build an ADU in addition to the units. If there was enough square footage that they could build within the density allowance, then they could, of course, build a unit, but not under the ADU. So this is the, the one standard that I want to have a conversation on tonight, and this is the increased-size standard. So when looking at standards in the ADUs, the standards have to be designed, or not designed or applied in a manner that burdens the development of ADUs and should maximize the potential for ADU development. The state has put, put in the, that we, that the size of ADUs could go up to fifty percent of the existing living area of a home, and up to one thousand two hundred square feet. Our current ordinance I have on the slide and to the right, and it's based on lot sizes, so between, depending on the size of the lots, we have a minimum of five thousand in order to have an ADU, and then depending on the size of the lot, the, the ADUs increase from five hundred square feet to six hundred and forty square feet, and then are topped off at eight hundred square feet for a max, for a ten thousand square-foot lot. So under this standard, there are some options for the planning commission. The first is we could, as it's drafted today, it mirrors the state, stating that the size of an ADU can be up to fifty percent of the existing home area, but not to exceed twelve hundred square feet.
Is it the existing home or the existing habitable space? I was confused by that. Do you count garages?
I believe it's habitable, is the way it's worded.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So I, sorry, I should clarify. The habitable living space of the home, I think is how it's worded. So, or, so that's one option, and that's how it's drafted today, and that reflects the state. In, in talking with our city attorney, and Ben did more of a deep dive into what other cities are doing, that the standard that we have in Capitola can also be applied, as long as we don't think it's a burden on the development of ADUs and that there, we're maximizing the potential for ADU development under that. So within that, we can keep the sizes as we have them today, because also for health and safety reasons, we could say that based on the sizes of the lots, we wouldn't want a home to be more than, an ADU to be more than eight hundred and square, square feet because of health and safety. Or we could take the, the Capitola standards that we have today, but increase on the far end of that, when you get into larger lots, from the eight hundred square feet, we could massage those with the max ADU sizes to get it closer to the twelve hundred square feet max that's allowed by the state. So that's really, I'll stop there, and that's kind of the conversation, the direction we're looking for tonight is...
I'm trying to remember why we started with a minimum of five thousand square feet. I, I vaguely recall we had that discussion.
That's been in our code, so that standard exists today, and...
Because it eliminates the jewel box, it eliminates a lot of Capitola, and I, is that a good thing?
But it doesn't eliminate them from having an internal ADU. It only eliminates them from having a detached ADU.
Is that correct?
Under...
Under today's standard, I believe they have to have a minimum of the 5,000 square feet to have an internal ADU, because the kitchen. You could have, in a single-family home right now, you could have a, like, the kitchenette bar with a, you know, the sink is smaller, and no stove, no real stove, no 220 plug. So that would be allowed, but as a separate unit with a full kitchen is not allowed.
So, would that fit the junior ADU definition?
So that would fit the junior ADU definition, so.
Well, to me, then, to go to your other question, at least in Capitola lifestyle, 800 square feet is a good size for a ADU. I mean...
It is. A lot of people live in houses selling up Gilroy that are, you know, 900 square feet, and that's all else.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking a lot south of those hills, I can see where 1,200 square feet ADU would make sense, but...
But there's not very many 10,000-square-foot lots, but...
There are a number of them in cliffward heights areas.
Yeah.
Well, no, you just need a 2,400, or what would you need to?
2,400 square-foot house.
Yeah, yeah, to have a 1,200, but seems, I mean, that's, yeah, I just think we should have a lower number.
I like, I actually like the numbers that we have. I think they work for Capitola. We spent a long time talking about it, and, you know, they're appropriate size. I mean, we're not trying to set these up so they can be an additional home. They're a secondary, accessory dwelling unit on the same property. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with what we have in there. I don't think they need to be any bigger.
And I don't think that the way that they are, I think it meets the, they're not designed or applied in a manner that burdens the development of ADUs. It's just who we are.
What about less than 4,000, I mean, 5,000 square foot, though? I mean, the number of the lots in Depot Hill, for example, are 4,000. It's a standard lot, so...
But I think in a lot of areas right now, you know, we all think of our own neighborhoods, you know, Riverview Terrace is so congested right now, and, you know, it has smaller lots on there.
The state doesn't care.
Trying, trying to add more units, and there would, would be a burden on the neighborhood, not people trying to develop them, so I think the 5,000-square-foot standard is pretty reasonable for Capitola.
Oh, I'm not saying anything, I just thought the state standard would, it's not based on a burden to the community, it's based on a burden to the ADU folks, right, on the...
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the underlying principles of the new state statute is that agencies should encourage them to the extent possible, and they don't restrict us on what type of lot size standard we want to have, as long as it doesn't unduly discourage them. What that means exactly, you know, is a good question, but our city attorney did feel like we could keep that 5,000-square-foot limit if we chose.
Well, I disagree with keeping that, because, I mean, I appreciate the congestion, but I also appreciate the tremendous demand, and the, I think the ADUs are really a great solution to a lot of the housing, some of the housing issues that we have. And I, I think 5,000 and over in Capitola is, I'm going to guess, less than 10% of our...
Well, I can think, in my neighborhood, the 4,000-square-foot lot, there's a number of ADUs already up there. They're not necessarily being used that way, but there's a, I mean, I can think of, in fact, four or five of my neighbors that have them, that aren't currently being used that way, but...
You could also do a tiered system, where Commissioner Westman was suggesting, or asking whether or not an internal ADU was privy to the 5,000-square-foot requirement, which it is today, but you could tier it, that the internal ADU would be allowable under the 5,000 square feet, but an attached or detached ADU, which is a new construction, would be subject to the 5,000. That's another option.
I think internal and attached.
That makes good sense.
I'd like to draw the line between detached and the internal and attached, 4,000.
I think 4,000, because that gets you up in the Depot Hill area with all the lots.
And jewel box.
And jewel box, yeah. I can live without.
4,000 for the internal and attached, but not for the detached.
Right, okay. Okay.
And the statute seems, I mean, it seems to incorporate the concept of junior ADU within, in other words, not have a separate category for junior ADU. But wouldn't that come into play for below 500 square feet?
It would, and I have some slides on that, so we can go over the factors of, but actually the, so the junior ADU, I'll go into my slides, and we can talk about how that's impacted at the 5,000 square feet, but we, you may, that's another tier we could add to that. There's also a lot of...
I would, maybe a way to go below the 5,000 would be to, that would be the category for a junior ADU.
So then it's maxed at 500 square feet, which is similar here, you know, it'd be maxed at 500 square feet. It would be limited, a junior ADU is limited to an accessory kitchen, so it doesn't have a full-size sink. It can have a shared bathroom with the main home, so that is another way to get them in, and it'd be similar in structure, because we're already at 500 square feet.
Yeah.
So, the junior ADU. Okay, shall I give you some more information about the junior ADU? So the junior ADU is maximum of 500 square feet. It has to be located within an existing residential structure. It may share a bathroom with the primary home. Must have an efficiency kitchen, so it's not allowed to, it must have an efficiency kitchen, so you can't leave the kitchen out. It can't be a shared kitchen with the main home, but it can't be a full sink plumbing, and it cannot have a 220 electricity hookup. You cannot, the city's not required, cannot require additional parking for a junior ADU, and then also the utility companies cannot require a connection fee. So, our, one suggestion we have to allow junior ADUs is to update the internal accessory dwelling unit definition to include junior accessory dwelling units as defined by the government code. We would, if you want to amend the code that junior ADUs be the only type of ADU that is allowed under the 5,000-square-foot minimum, we would revise this recommendation and have it as a separate category, but, and then, a junior ADU is really allowed within our ADU standards by allowing, by adding this definition to it, because within the defined government section, that describes the efficiency kitchen, as well as the shared bath. So, with that, any questions or discussion?
I had a question about no utility charges, or does that apply to the SoCal Water District?
That does, because this, it would, yep, because it's internal.
Ah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I like the way you did it, and the way we did it, in terms of expanding the 5,000 down, and defining the junior ADU as the way you're doing it.
For less than 5,000 square feet, you can have the junior ADU, I can't even say it.
You have the internal or attached, which includes a junior ADU. That's the way, maybe we're not saying the same thing.
Yeah, no, we are, you're, I'll go along with that, that's fine.
Is there a minimum tied to that?
4,000.
4,000, okay.
That'll get us 50% more of the city.
Okay. And I'll just bring up, a lot of the lot sizes in town, there's a lot of 3,200-square-foot lots that are 40 feet wide by 80 feet deep in the jewel box. So just to be, if you, if you want to include the jewel box, but I'd be happy to bring back a map that breaks down with colors the different size lots.
Isn't the jewel box mostly 40 by 100?
There's quite a few in town that are 30, 40 by 80.
Yeah, having a map and actually seeing what we're talking about, rather than just guessing, probably would make a lot of sense.
You know, we do have a map. I found one when we adopted our second unit ordinance, and from memory, I want to say that roughly 40%, give or take, of the lots in town, residentially zoned lots, were 5,000 square feet or greater. That is from memory, so...
I vaguely remember seeing something like that at one time, but, I mean, could we bring it back and take a look at it?
Sure.
It would help to know what we're talking about.
Because people can still rent a room in their house to a student or something with no, don't have to do the ADU at all.
That's totally unregulated.
Just, and one, I guess, little concern I have about the junior ADU, because I noticed this has no parking requirements. So, are we putting more cars into the neighborhoods by allowing? So, I, I mean, that's another reason why it's good to look at an actual map and see where this is going to happen. To me, that's, would be the only downside, that maybe we should...
But state law doesn't allow us to require parking for the junior ADU.
Right, right. I know, we can't change that, but it sounds like it's, either we have it or not.
You're right. You know, it's just the way it goes.
Kind of a trade-off there, and we have to go along with that.
At some point, you get to like San Francisco, where you can't even find a space in front of a fireplug.
I have one other question about the parking. So, it talks about, it can be tandem and in the setback area? Does that include the city's right-of-way area? You know, we always run that issue.
No, this is off, onsite parking.
Okay.
Okay, one other change that came is for the garage conversions, that setbacks cannot be required for an existing garage that is converted to an ADU, so. With that, I just wanted to bring up a couple additional standards that are in the draft that were changes from the code that exists today and the draft code that is new. One is the requirement for one parking space for an attached or detached ADU. Also, the other big change is that now the code allows two-story ADUs, so you can have an ADU above a garage, or a two-story ADU, but it's going to have increased setbacks, as well as it'll be required to come before the Planning Commission for a design permit and a conditional use permit. So those are the two major changes that were made prior to us revising this whole ordinance based on the state. And one other change was during our last meeting, there was direction to add a requirement that the removal of an ADU cannot create a non-conformity. So that will probably be in the deed restriction areas of the updated code, but...
So just a point of clarification, if you have a detached two-car garage, and you want to turn that detached two-car garage into an ADU, either half of it or all of it, whatever, you can do that with no additional setbacks, but if you want to put an ADU on top of it, so you keep your parking, you've got increased setbacks, can, can that be applied so that it's a setback of the second story only, or would they have?
Yep, it could be the setback for the addition.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's at five feet for a side yard in the draft.
What are we doing about the requirement that the owner occupy either the main residence or the ADU?
So that flip-flopped twice during the zoning code update. At first, there was direction to remove that requirement, and then it came full circle, and that requirement is still in there, that the owner must either live in the main unit or the accessory dwelling unit.
I thought that changed...
But we do have a phrase in there that the Planning Commission may grant an exception if there's...
And that's going to be reflected by some sort of recorded document?
Yes.
When people come in for the ADU permit.
Currently, we record a document with every ADU, a deed restriction.
Well, you know, I wanted to just bring up, under the draft, 17.74.070, deed restrictions, it doesn't list that as one of the listed items. This is on page, packet page 186.
Right, that's a good catch. What's not listed there? That the owner has to either live in the main house or the accessory dwelling unit.
So we, I see, because we approved that, that it could be, that they don't have to be in the draft, right? And then, city council changed it? Because what comes back to me is that whole heritage.
Right, right, it came up with a guy in heritage.
But that's why we have an exception in there. We could deal with him, because it says that under, where is the language? I'm not going to find it right now. The Planning Commission can look, if it's a hardship case, the Planning Commission can give them an exemption.
Yeah, I remember seeing it, but I can't find it right now.
It's under occupancy? So, so the story was that during issues and options, we were given direction to remove it, and then after that public hearing, in which we heard several people discuss the need for removing it, then that's when we, it flipped off back.
17.74.070. The Planning Commission may grant an exception to this requirement in case of a unique hardship with the approval of a conditional use permit.
Okay, so are we going to continue this?
Yes, so we'd like to continue. I did have, I can bring this back, though.
Yeah, I think, I sense that we're all getting a little bit fatigued with it. It's clear we're going to be back in April. One of the things that we will talk about is the Village Sidewalk signs, based on our most recent application. We'll take a look at that. We've got a couple other loose ends we want to tie up, show you the revisions to the map. And I think it'll be our goal in April to get a recommendation from you to suggest that the city council initiate publicly.
Yeah.
Can I maybe raise a couple of other issues?
Sure.
And to maybe bring back for us, and one with, and we talked a little bit about the utility fee already, but reading this HCD brochure, it seemed to even restrict the Water District's ability to, how much they can charge. It says it has to be proportional and reasonable. And so I, I was curious, well, is there any estimate of what that is, and has there been any discussion with the Water District about what that may be? So, and I, I'm not expecting, I just wanted to maybe...
I think I can give you a quick answer. SoCal is excluded, because in the statute, it refers to a local agency, which is defined in the California Code as being a city or county. And we've talked to the city attorney about that, as well as people at Legis Cities, and it's unclear whether that was an oversight or a successful lobbying effort, but independent water and sewer districts are not subject to that requirement.
Well, I remember that that was mentioned, but on packet page 200, it says, what are the utility fee requirements that apply to non-city and county service districts?
What page are you on?
Packet page 200.
It's in the state handout.
Handout.
Yeah, the HCD, you know, little brochure.
Yeah, that, that section of this guidance, to me, looks unclear, but I think it's worth us going back and double-checking.
Yeah, I mean, it's just raised some questions in my mind, and I thought maybe I'd put them out here now. And on, and I already mentioned about the deed restriction, but also under, in our proposed ordinance, 17.74.080 concerning incentives and fee waivers, I was curious, I mean, it says that the city may waive the development fee that will be, for units that will be rented at affordable, for low-income households. And I was just curious as to what, what is the value of that? But then it goes on to say, though, that the landlord, at any point in time, if they just pay those fees, all of a sudden, it's jacked up, okay? So, to me, I guess I would like to have some history about that, are we bound by that, and some discussion, because that seemed to be a bit of bootstrapping to make what was an affordable unit now at some point, an unaffordable unit. It seemed to me that there would be a great tendency for them to come in, because it saves money, but then they save the money, and then they pay it off, jack up the rents, kick out the low-income families. So, I, you know, maybe if we could discuss that. And also, in, I did have a question about, again, this HCD, they refer to that manufactured home can be an ADU?
Someplace it says you can't bring in a trailer or a...
Well, I was wondering, yeah, so, I thought it said it had to be in keeping, but I just wonder how much ability that we have. This is on page 203 of HCD.
Well, our mobile home parks are regulated by HCD themselves. We don't oversee any building or planning permits in those parks, so that'll be their problem to work through.
Okay, so, but they're not saying that the ADU, let's say a detached ADU, could be a manufactured home pulled into a residential, you know, R1-zoned lot. I mean, because this says manufactured housing permitted as an ADU.
It's an interesting interpretation. It wasn't the way I read it, but you very well could be right. I think we would still have design control over such a project like that, should we want to exercise it.
I would want to make sure that we do have that, as much as we can.
Sure.
Ability to... I want a mall to look like the one they have on the cover. It's so cute.
Looks like our building out here.
It does, yeah. Well, thank you. Those were just...
Okay. All right. So, are we ready to move on to the director's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick items. First, next week, we're going to be presenting an amended ordinance to our medical marijuana processing cultivation ordinance. It's basically going to be to expand it to recreational marijuana and reaction to Proposition 64. As part of that meeting, we also will ask the council, however, to give us some direction on if there are any marijuana-related business types that they would want to allow. Currently, we generally don't allow any of those types of businesses, with the exception of laboratory testing. So we will be seeking their direction on that. And the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, we did get an application for the Sears project. They have resubmitted. The good news is that it's a full facade improvement this time. They call it a Class A facade improvement, rather than a Class C, which is what I think we had before. The bad news is, they didn't really take much of your other direction very seriously. So we're still doing our completeness review. We haven't finished it yet, but I did want to let you know that they are back in, and sometime in the future, you'll see them again. And that concludes my comments.
And the commissioner communications.
So I, I wanted to comment on that, because I'm very concerned about, you know, Sears coming back in, because in my opinion, we've talked about when we redid our zoning, that we were going to do a specific plan for the mall parcel. And to me, you know, the Sears is part of that mall parcel. And I would hate to see us not get, you know, the improvements and the quality we want to have going on in the mall, because the whole thing gets pieced, you know, because they're in separate ownerships. So I would really like to see the city look at some way where we could start this specific plan process, so like the Sears building could be included in it, something so that we look at that piece of property as a whole unit, because that's how we envisioned it in our new general plan. And we need something to guide us, so there's some sort of uniform development. And we do get the additional things we want, like the pedestrian connections to Capitola Road and some of the other improvements. So I'd like to see staff sort of take that to the council, and see if we can come up with a way where we can make certain we're not going to piecemeal the mall development.
Yeah, I agree. Is that something we need to make a motion on? Is that something we can just ask staff to do?
Yeah, I think that's fine. We'll talk about it internally, try to see if we come up some ideas, and very possibly return to your April meeting and share those with you before we go to council.
Yeah, it's really unfortunate timing at this point to go ahead with a significant project, at least until we know for sure the big picture.
I agree. Good. Thank you.
So we stand adjourned until April?
Sorry, before we adjourn, can I get a motion to continue to the April meeting for the zoning code update?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Thank you.
Right. Good work, everyone. You earned your $125 today.
Yes. Is it still today?